A meeting of the Stewart City Commission at 5:42 PM. I apologize for our delay on August 24th. We will begin with the roll call, after which we will have a swearing in of our new and returning board members. Ms. Kendall, will you call the roll, please?
Mayor Meyer.
Here.
Vice Mayor Clark.
Here.
Commissioner Brunner.
Here.
Commissioner Matheson.
Here.
Commissioner McDonald. Here. Now on to the swearing in.
We ready to receive?
Pledge of Allegiance.
We can do it before.
Whatever one you want to do. Whatever order, pledge or the thing.
Why don't we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Go down front. I think he's going to do them individually.
I will do them.
I'll just let the judge.
My name is William Robey. I'm a circuit judge here in the 19th Circuit. Been a circuit judge for almost 21 years, and I've done a few swearing ins in my career, and I'm really excited doing a mass swearing here with all four folks today. Very excited about y'all taking, either going back to your positions or taking new positions. Look forward to having a good city commission. If I could have Mr. McDonald stand up and raise your right hand. If you'll repeat after me, sir. I.
I.
Say your name.
Sir McDonald.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Honor.
Honor.
Protect and defend.
Protect and defend.
The Constitution and government of the United States.
The Constitution and government of the United States.
And the state of Florida.
And the state of Florida.
That I am duly qualified.
That I am duly qualified.
To hold office.
To hold office.
Under the Constitution.
Under the Constitution.
Of the state of Florida.
Of the state of Florida.
And under the Charter of the City of Stewart.
And under the Charter of the City of Stewart.
And that I will.
And that I will.
Well.
Well.
And faithfully perform.
Faithfully and perform.
The duties of City of Stewart Commissioner.
The duties of City of Stewart Commissioner.
On which I am now.
On which I am now.
About to enter.
About to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
You're in. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay. Mayor Michael Meyer. If you feel stanced, sir, raise your right hand. I.
I.
Say your name.
Mayor Meyer.
Very good. You're on top of it. Do you solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will.
That I will.
Support, honor, protect.
Support, honor, protect.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution and government of the United States.
The Constitution and government of the United States.
And the state of Florida.
And the state of Florida.
That I am duly qualified.
That I am duly qualified.
To hold office.
To hold office.
Under the Constitution.
Under the Constitution.
Of the state of Florida.
State of Florida.
And under the Charter.
And under the Charter.
Of the City of Stewart.
Of the City of Stewart.
And that I.
And that I.
Will well.
Will well.
And faithfully perform.
Faithfully perform.
The duties of City of Stewart Commissioner.
The duties of City of Stewart Commissioner.
On which I am now.
On which I am now.
About to enter.
About to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, ma'am.
Thank you.
Commissioner Matheson. Sir, if you'd be kind enough to raise your right hand. I.
I, William Merritt Matheson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Honor, protect, and defend.
Honor, protect, and defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And government of the United States.
And government of the United States.
And the state of Florida.
And the state of Florida.
That I am duly qualified.
That I am duly qualified.
To hold office.
To hold office.
Under the Constitution.
Under the Constitution.
Of the state of Florida.
State of Florida.
And under the Charter.
And under the Charter.
Of the City of Stewart.
Of the City of Stewart.
And that I will.
And that I will.
Well and faithfully perform.
Well and faithfully perform.
The duties of City of Stewart Commissioner.
The duties of City of Stewart Commissioner.
On which I am now.
On which I am now.
About to enter.
About to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Yula Clark. Ma'am, if you're kind enough to raise your right hand, I'll swear you in. I.
I.
Say your name.
Mayor Clark.
Very good. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will.
That I will.
Support, honor, protect.
Support, honor, protect.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution and government of the United States.
The Constitution and government of the United States.
And the state of Florida.
And the state of Florida.
That I am duly qualified.
That I am duly qualified.
To hold office.
To hold office.
Under the Constitution.
Under the Constitution.
Of the state of Florida.
Of the state of Florida.
And under the Charter.
And under the Charter.
Of the City of Stewart.
Of the City of Stewart.
And that I.
And that I.
Will well.
Will well.
And faithfully perform.
Faithfully perform.
The duties of City of Stewart Commissioner.
The duties of City of Stewart Commissioner.
On which I am now.
On which I am now.
About to enter.
About to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, ma'am.
Thank you.
Commissioner Matheson. Sir, if you'd be kind enough to raise your right hand. I.
I, William Merritt Matheson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Honor, protect, and defend.
Honor, protect, and defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And government of the United States.
And government of the United States.
And the state of Florida.
And the state of Florida.
That I am duly qualified.
That I am duly qualified.
To hold office.
To hold office.
Under the Constitution.
Under the Constitution.
Of the state of Florida.
State of Florida.
And under the Charter.
And under the Charter.
Of the City of Stewart.
Of the City of Stewart.
And that I.
And that I.
Will well.
Will well.
And faithfully perform.
Faithfully perform.
The duties of City of Stewart Commissioner.
The duties of City of Stewart Commissioner.
On which I am now.
On which I am now.
About to enter.
About to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, ma'am.
Thank you.
Commissioner Matheson. Sir, if you'd be kind enough to raise your right hand. I.
I, William Merritt Matheson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Honor, protect, and defend.
Honor, protect, and defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And government of the United States.
And government of the United States.
And the state of Florida.
And the state of Florida.
That I am duly qualified.
That I am duly qualified.
To hold office.
To hold office.
Under the Constitution.
Under the Constitution.
Of the state of Florida.
Of the state of Florida.
And under the Charter of the City of Stewart.
And under the Charter of the City of Stewart.
And that I.
And that I.
Will well and faithfully perform.
Will well and faithfully perform.
The duties of City of Stewart Commissioner.
The duties of City of Stewart Commissioner.
On which I am now.
On which I am now.
About to enter.
About to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, sir.
The best one we've ever had.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you.
I know, I'm just signing.
Wonderful. How nice to have a full board again. Congratulations, and thank you. We'll move on to our, one of our two proclamations for today. Very excited to announce Patriot Day. Mr. Mortel, would you kindly read the proclamation to the record?
Proclamation, Patriot Day, September 11th, 2020. Whereas, on September 11th, 2001, the United States endured the worst terrorist attack in our history, which tragically ended the lives of thousands of innocent people, and 19 years later, we continue to mourn the devastating loss of the men and women who perished. And whereas, we remember countless men and women in uniform and their families who have made the ultimate sacrifice in defense of our freedom, personal liberty, and security, in addition to those who never cease to make sacrifices in their own lives in order to serve our country every day. And whereas, individuals, organizations, and communities throughout our country and across the City of Stewart will gather to comfort one another and pray together as we honor our nation and the memory of those who lost their lives on September 11th, 2001. And while we can never replace the precious lives that were lost on that day, it is because of the selfless actions of thousands of individuals who did everything within their power to save the lives of the people around them, that we as a nation can look back on this horrific day in history with hope in our hearts for the future. Now therefore, I, Michael J. Meyer, Mayor of the City of Stewart, Florida, do hereby proclaim September 11th, 2020, as Patriot Day in the City of Stewart, Florida, and encourage its citizens to observe this day with recognition and a moment of silence beginning at 8:46 AM in honor of those who were killed on September 11th, 2001 in the New York City, Pennsylvania, and Washington, DC.
Thank you, Mr. Mortel. Next, our proclamation for National Suffrage Month, the 100th anniversary of the 19th Amendment to the U.S. Constitution. Mr. Mortel?
Centennial proclamation declaring August 2020 as National Women's Suffrage Month in celebration, recognition, and honor of the 100th anniversary of the 19th Amendment to the United States Constitution. Whereas, the bold, courageous, and powerful women who fought for the ratification of the 19th Amendment to the United States Constitution on August 26, 1920, deserve special celebration, especially on the 100th anniversary of its ratification in 2020. And whereas, the right to vote is the cornerstone of our democracy and the fundamental right upon which all our civil liberties rest. And whereas, the 19th Amendment did not guarantee suffrage for all women, including Native Americans, who did not gain the right to vote until 1924. For Asian-Pacific Islander-Americans, it was 1952. African-American and Latin-Americans suffered voter suppression until passage of the Voting Rights Act of 1965 and 1975. And whereas, the fact that today women are active in local, state, and national government and are running for office in unprecedented numbers reminds us that we all follow in the footsteps of these resolute American suffragists. And whereas, the 19th Amendment to the United States Constitution has played an important role in advancing the right of all women. Now therefore, I, Michael J. Meyer, Mayor of the City of Stewart, Florida, encourage residents of the City of Stewart to celebrate the 100th anniversary of the passage and ratification of the 19th Amendment, providing for women's suffrage to the Constitution of the United States.
Thank you, Mr. Mortel, and this might be a little bit of a surprise, but I would like for my two wonderful and admirable colleagues on the board to come receive this on the floor as not only women who vote, but as women who lead.
Wow.
She's got to get her shoes on.
No one told you, right?
Yeah.
Thank you. My honor, to honor you. Thanks. Okay. We'll move on to our service awards for the month. Today, we're celebrating Grace Alvarado with the Development Department for 15 years of service. We also have William Griffin in Public Works for 15 years of service. And this is a really, a really great one. 25 years of service, Tammy Farnham at the Police Department. You'll, you'll hand it off, Chief.
After he takes his 10% cut.
Hey, all right. Next, we have our Employee of the Month for August 2020, and I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Krolski.
No, you're not. You're going to turn it over to me.
Oh, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Dyes.
I pulled a little fast one on everyone, so I know it does say that Community Services has this event, but I stole it from them. And I want to do a special Employee of the Month this month, and I'm going to, I have some things to say and read it, but I'm going to have him come out here first. Mr. Peters, could you come out here? Come on. Get my own people back there. He's going to, he is going to kill me.
Does he have COVID? He's looking a little red and flushed.
That's not how this dog's supposed to hunt.
Yeah, I know. Mr. Peters always takes the month Employee of the Month, but he gives them to all of his staff, which is great. In addition, I'm going to read something here in just a second, but I wanted to say, say something about Dave's dedication to the city. And Mortel can tell you this also. It's amazing to us when we get a reply on our emails at 3:00 AM from Dave. I'm like, does this guy ever sleep? I think he might be a little bit of a vampire. Dave is here constantly, very early, very late. He is a very dedicated employee, and not only is he recognized as Stewart City Employee of the Month, but he's also been recognized as a Florida Rural Water Association's Manager/Administrator of the Year. I got permission. He wouldn't let me reveal that, but I got permission from the organization. This was a 10-page submission by staff on behalf of Dave. He didn't even know they were submitting it, so I'm just going to read an excerpt from their submission. "Dave Peters has been one of the most influential and accomplished managing directors and leaders in the history of the City of Stewart. Throughout his tenure, Dave has adapted, innovated, and motivated the City Public Works Department to great achievements, including but not limited to: the completion of the Stewart Septic to Sewer Conversion Program, the development of the state-of-the-art and first-and-largest-of-its-kind PFC Treatment Facility, transformation of the wastewater treatment facility into a reclamation facility, the establishment of a monthly neighborhood cleanup program, the development of an annual Water Fest special event that educates local children and families, and so much more. Dave is approaching the end of his long public service career, and with 20 years of his time in dedication to the people of Stewart specifically, he has more than earned the distinction of the Manager/Administrator of the Year." And the last thing I just want to show before you walk down there and hand this certificate. This is our budget book, and in honor of Dave this year is the Dave Peters Water Tower on the cover of the book.
That makes me feel a little better.
Come take a photo with me.
You're a great guy.
Grab a photo, then have his family come up here, too.
It's a family.
Ah, you can see them all back there, didn't you?
All right. There's a beautiful family.
Please say a few words.
Oh, wait.
Here, go ahead.
Nope.
He's still saying wow.
I don't know what to say. I didn't expect this. I don't deserve it. I can tell you, the people I work with do. They're the ones that drank the Kool-Aid. They're the ones that believed we could do better. I, I have a great staff, had a great number of people, have commissioners who have supported me through the years in our off-the-wall, off-the-cuff kind of projects that, that you'll celebrate on Friday, by the way. Take a leap of faith. But thank you for this recognition. Thank you, Mr. Dyes, for this recognition.
Thank all of them. Half of your staff is standing all day.
That's what makes me want to get up every morning and come to work. Those people around the clock, seven days a week, I'm not that guy. They're the people that make this happen. I just happen to be the one that gets to stand up before you from time to time, but they're the really, the ones that, that make this work in the Public Works Department. 20-plus years, there's not a day that doesn't go by that I don't want to come in here, ever. And I'll miss that, but, but I'll be at home, driving my wife crazy. She looks forward to that. Thank you so very, very much. I didn't expect that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Dave, go Buckeyes. Go Buckeyes.
Congratulations, sir.
We are ready.
Next, we'll have a, a presentation on a contemporary art exhibit in Gazebo Park by Ms. Susan Coras, the CRA manager of Martin County.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the Commission. I, I'm going to say congratulations to Mr. Peters. That's really a tough act to follow. So thank you again, Penal, for putting me at the perfect place on my agenda. There it is. And do I have a, a quick? Thank you. As mentioned, my name is Susan Coras. I'm the manager for the Office of Community Development. And in the county, the Office of Community Development, which, you know, does occasionally go by the unfortunate acronym of OCD, we manage three key activities. We oversee and administer our six Martin County CRA areas. We oversee and manage the Art in Public Places program, as well as the Historic Preservation program. But today, it's all about art. So currently, we're still loading. That's okay, we'll be past this one in a second. Currently, the county has a small inventory, about 15 artworks throughout, and they're made up of different disciplines. We've got ceramics, we've got mosaics, a little bit of sculpture, some photography. They are, for the most part, fairly small-scale and fairly traditional. And you can see some of them up there. So recently, the Martin County Art in Public Places program has taken advantage of a pretty unique opportunity, and that opportunity was to purchase five contemporary metal and cement sculptures. They're large, and they are done by a Mr. Gary Gresko, who is an award-winning artist and sculptor. And what I'm going to do is just run quickly through the five pieces. You'll get to see what the artist describes, how the artist describes it, as well as some specs that go with each. Gives you a good sense of the scale and the color of what we're talking about. This one is called Transponder, and it is the tallest of the bunch at 11 feet, and you can see that none of them, and you'll see as we go along, none of them are light. So this one is 1,000 pounds. The next one is called Tumbling Towards the Sun, and this is a Best in Show Award winner. And I always look at this picture after I look at the first one, and I think, oh, that's fairly small, and then you look down and you're like, oh, that's seven feet. It's really not that small, and this one weighs in as the heaviest. So all of them, with the exception of one, are hurricane-proof. They require minimal maintenance, and again, all but one get installed by being, being, I guess, drilled or whatever.
Bolted.
There you go, to a cement pad. So this one is called Yap Money Stones, and there actually is a place called the Island of Yap. I'll have you know that it was on Jeopardy just a week ago, and a friend of mine actually knew the answer because of this. These are reinforced cement, and these are, this is one that is bolted directly into the ground. This does not need a cement pad. Again, minimal maintenance, they are quite heavy. This is a kinetic piece called Silent Sounds of Service. This is an aluminum piece, and it is the only one that is not completely hurricane-proof. So you'll see that middle piece right here. This would need to be removed if you have storm winds of 60 or above. And last is called Red Angle, and this is a fiberglass and steel, again, you know, fairly large, tall, and minimal maintenance, hurricane-proof, all of those things. So if you, if you do approve the installation and exhibit of these contemporary sculptures, we will have Gresko in the gazebo, and I will explain that to you. So originally from North Carolina, just a little bit about Mr. Gresko. He's an award-winning sculptor. He has works throughout the southeastern United States. He has nine public art commissioned pieces in North Carolina alone. He's actually from North Carolina originally. He now resides in Barefoot Bay, which is in the little north of here, like the Sebastian area, I think. And you can see he does take a lot of advantage of shows here in the Stewart area as well. He has a passion for working in different mediums, so he sculpts in wood, in cement, in steel. You can see a few of his installations here that are in North Carolina, and much of the work that he's done has been commissioned by cities and universities. So we propose to place the sculptures at Gazebo Park, hence the Gresko in the gazebo. And you can see here, this is an aerial shot of, oops, aerial shot of where Gazebo Park is, and you can see that in here, there are actually six cement pads that have already been installed in that park, so it's kind of a perfect place for something to happen. We are planning and proposing to work with Martin County Arts Foundation, as well as the City of Stewart Art Program, to market and produce and promote this Gary Gresko show, temporary sculpture show, for countywide enjoyment and education. So what's the actual plan? The plan? So we're looking for the artwork to be delivered and installed in the fall of 2020. We're looking at November, so after hurricanes, before holidays, which is a small window of time right there. Four of them will be anchored to the cement pads, as mentioned earlier. The Yap Stones would go directly into the ground near the fifth pad, and we will also be producing some signage and information regarding the entire exhibit to go probably near the sixth pad, but that will be decided once we kind of figure out where we want each piece to go. We would plan to have an opening to introduce the exhibit, and that would be during, scheduled sometime during season, January through March. We propose that the artwork remain in place for 12 to 24 months, and after that, it, they would be, each piece would be dispersed throughout the county as we find areas that are suitable for them, places that are suitable for them. So I believe that this project is a winner. I hope you all agree. I think it brings contemporary public art to our community. We don't have much of that, I think you would agree to that, promoting partnerships with other arts organizations, and it's different, it's fun, it's sure to bring people downtown. So that concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Ms. Coras. I have, my only question, and I don't mean to be a wet blanket, because I think this is fabulous, and I would love to see that in Gazebo Park, but my first thought was, I'm thinking of myself as a six-year-old kid. I want to climb that. I want to climb one of those sculptures. So is there any plan for, you know, how they would be safe if somebody wanted to touch or climb or?
So, so there's a couple of different things that we look at when doing large public art installations. One of them is ADA accessible, and we've kind of looked at that with this project and figured out with our county ADA person that we're good. We don't have to worry about that. And the second is liability-type issues like that. To be honest with you, Mr. Mayor, I don't think that there's any way to keep people off if they truly want to do that. The way generally public art works is you put up signage that says, do not climb, you know, try to make it, I guess, hard for them to do it. The one, the only one I think here that, well, there's two. There would be the Yap Money Stones and the Tumbling Towards the Sun would be the two I think that kids would be anxious to climb on. So there isn't any other way to keep them off, other than through signage that I know of. I will tell you, in the experience I've had doing public art in other cities, West Palm Beach and Pompano, we really never had that issue. Interestingly enough, I don't know, I think parents understand it and respect it. I'm not sure kids do, but we just have to hope our parents are watching.
Sure.
Yeah.
So currently, we're still loading. That's okay, we'll be past this one in a second. Currently, the county has a small inventory, about fifteen artworks throughout, and they're made up of different disciplines. We've got ceramics, we've got mosaics, a little bit of sculpture, some photography. They are, for the most part, fairly small scale and fairly traditional. And you can see some of them up there. So recently, the Martin County Art in Public Places program has taken advantage of a pretty unique opportunity, and that opportunity was to purchase five contemporary metal and cement sculptures. They're large, and they are done by a Mr. Gary Gresko, who is an award-winning artist and sculptor. And what I'm going to do is just run quickly through the five pieces. You'll get to see what the artist describes, how the artist describes it, as well as some specs that go with each. Gives you a good sense of the scale and the color of what we're talking about. This one is called Transponder. And it is the tallest of the bunch at eleven feet. And you can see that none of them, and you'll see as we go along, none of them are light. So this one is a thousand pounds. The next one is called Tumbling Towards the Sun, and this is a Best in Show Award winner. And I always look at this picture after I look at the first one, and I think, oh, that's fairly small. And then you look down and you're like, oh, it's seven feet. It's really not that small. And this one weighs in as the heaviest. So all of them, with the exception of one, are hurricane-proof. They require minimal maintenance. And again, all but one get installed by being, I guess, drilled or whatever.
Bolted.
There you go, to a cement pad. So this one is called Yap Money Stones, and there actually is a place called the Island of Yap. I'll have you know that it was on Jeopardy just a week ago. And a friend of mine actually knew the answer because of this. These are reinforced cement, and these are, this is one that is bolted directly into the ground. This does not need a cement pad. Again, minimal maintenance. They are quite heavy. This is a kinetic piece called Silent Sounds of Service. This is an aluminum piece, and it is the only one that is not completely hurricane-proof. So you'll see that middle piece right here. This would need to be removed if you have storm winds of sixty or above. And last is called Red Angle. And this is a fiberglass and steel, again, you know, fairly large, tall, and minimal maintenance, hurricane-proof, all of those things. So if you, if you do approve the installation and exhibit of these contemporary sculptures, we will have Gresko in the gazebo. And I will explain that to you. So originally from North Carolina, just a little bit about Mr. Gresko. He's an award-winning sculptor. He has works throughout the southeastern United States. He has nine public art commissioned pieces in North Carolina alone. He's actually from North Carolina originally. He now resides in Barefoot Bay, which is in the little north of here, like the Sebastian area, I think. And you can see he does take a lot of advantage of shows here in the Stewart area as well. He has a passion for working in different mediums. So he sculpts in wood, in cement, in steel. You can see a few of his installations here that are in North Carolina. And much of the work that he's done has been commissioned by cities and universities. So we propose to place the sculptures at Gazebo Park, hence the Gresko in the gazebo. And you can see here, this is an aerial shot of, oops, aerial shot of where Gazebo Park is. And you can see that in here, there are actually six cement pads that have already been installed in that park. So it's kind of a perfect place for something to happen. We are planning and proposing to work with Martin County Arts Foundation, as well as the City of Stewart Art Program, to market and produce and promote this Gary Gresko show, temporary sculpture show, for countywide enjoyment and education. So what's the actual plan, the plan? So we're looking for the artwork to be delivered and installed in the fall of 2020. We're looking at November, so after hurricanes before holidays, which is a small window of time right there. Four of them will be anchored to the cement pads, as mentioned earlier. The Yap Stones would go directly into the ground near the fifth pad. And we will also be producing some signage and information regarding the entire exhibit to go probably near the sixth pad. But that will be decided once we kind of figure out where we want each piece to go. We would plan to have an opening to introduce the exhibit, and that would be during, scheduled sometime during season, January through March. We propose that the artwork remain in place for twelve to twenty-four months. And after that, they would be, each piece would be dispersed throughout the county as we find areas that are suitable for them, places that are suitable for them. So I believe that this project is a winner. I hope you all agree. I think it brings contemporary public art to our community. We don't have much of that. I think you would agree to that. Promoting partnerships with other arts organizations. And it's different, it's fun. It's sure to bring people downtown. So that concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Ms. Coras. I have, my only question, and I don't mean to be a wet blanket, because I think this is fabulous, and I would love to see that in Gazebo Park. But my first thought was, I'm thinking of myself as a six-year-old kid. I want to climb that. I want to climb one of those sculptures. So is there any plan for, you know, how they would be safe if somebody wanted to touch or climb or?
So, so there's a couple of different things that we look at when doing large public art installations. One of them is ADA accessible. And we've kind of looked at that with this project and figured out with our county ADA person that we're good. We don't have to worry about that. And the second is liability type issues like that. To be honest with you, Mr. Mayor, I don't think that there's any way to keep people off if they truly want to do that. The way generally public art works is you put up signage that says, do not climb, you know, try to make it, I guess, hard for them to do it. The one, the only one I think here that, well, there's two. There would be the Yap Money Stones and the Tumbling Towards the Sun would be the two I think that kids would be anxious to climb on. So there isn't any other way to keep them off, other than through signage that I know of. I will tell you, in the experience I've had doing public art in other cities, West Palm Beach and Pompano, we really never had that issue. Interestingly enough, I don't know, I think parents understand it and respect it. I'm not sure kids do, but we just have to hope our parents are watching.
Sure.
Yeah.
You mentioned liability, so, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So the bolt-in-down of them, that's a tried and true process that they're?
Yeah, that's the way they all are installed. And what we will do, I've been working with Mr. Kroski on that. So what we'll do is we'll have a drawing of how that works, so that you can take into account wind load and weight and all of those things. So we'll, we'll get those types of, he asked for those types of engineering drawings, so that Public Works can look at that, so that that would be in order.
And can I ask Mr. Mortel and Ms. Terrell, Ms. Terrell is in the audience from the Arts Council, just from your experience, when you put up your signage, do we need something very, very specific? So that liability, it, you know, people know right away. I don't know if Ms. Terrell, when she does her art shows or whatever, if there's something there that we put up that says, you know, because I don't want to?
We have, there's two issues of liability. There's the issue brought up by the mayor, like if somebody were to hurt themselves. And then there's the issue of the art piece itself being damaged by someone running over it in a car or something like that. Both of those issues are covered by our insurance policy that the city carries. And as you're aware, right now, we have these sailfish that are surrounding the community that have little historic markers on them. The same exact issue came up during that timeframe, and we reviewed it. And there was concern that, in fact, a child could climb up and literally fall and impale himself or herself on one of the sailfish. And basically, it's insured, and we, you know, thankfully haven't had that happen. But yes, there is a chance that someone could climb on one of them and get hurt. We do have insurance policies for it, and they would be misbehaving. So I don't know that it would qualify as an attractive nuisance, because they're not designed as swing sets. But we just address it on a case-by-case basis as it arises.
I'm excited to see this kind of art. I love the modern art and big statues like that. I wish we had more of it that was permanent, instead of all the sailfish and stuff we have. I do love the sailfish, but I would love to see more of it.
I hope a couple, at least one will end up within the city prominently in the downtown area once, for a permanent home. Great.
Ms. Clark, to respond to your question, I would leave all the liability questions to your attorney, however, and not dare to address those myself. But we have sculptures in front of the Courthouse Cultural Center. They're made to move. People touch them. People try to tie their bikes up to them, and we tell them not to. But that is, I mean, I hate to be flip about it, but it is kind of what insurance is there for. And it is part of the education of the overall public, that the sculpture is there as art. It is not a toy. It is not a swing set. And so the greater education component of this, I think, is where is critical in getting people's behaviors in line with how we want them to treat art in our community.
Thank you, Ms. Terrell.
And thank you, Martin County.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Coras.
You're welcome.
Any other questions I can answer?
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Okay. Next, we have Ms. Sheriff Fisher for a Kiwanis Club of Stewart Park proposal.
Hello, I'm Sheriff Fisher, President of Kiwanis Club of Stewart. We have some Kiwanians here with us and some that are visiting us via Zoom. I have with me Paul Bravo. He's with Rep Services. They're experts in play and outdoor spaces.
Excuse me, if you could speak directly into the microphone. I'm sorry. Usually, people don't ask me to do that because I'm so loud. I wish I could take off my mask, so you could see that I'm beaming from ear to ear with what we want to do with our park. And I've been here about a month ago, asking for budget requirements. But right now, we want to show you our vision. Now, before I turn it over to Paul, I just want to review with you what we've done thus far in the past five years. About five years ago, we built the Barrier Free Park. And that was about $275,000 to $300,000. Then, a year or two later, we did the sun shade over that area, about $88,000. The City of Stewart was so kind to build us some really nice bathrooms, including family bathrooms. And so after that, we renovated the old bathrooms into a kitchen area. You knew, you know, we do our pancakes in the park. We have seven, eight hundred people there. So we have a kitchen area there. Everything, time, and materials donated completely by our community, about thirty thousand. So now we're looking at renovating the rest of our park. The park's going to be completed in two phases. The first phase, the totlot, as we affectionately call it, will be about $250,000. Now, already, we've been donated $109,000, donated or pledged $109,000 towards that. And one final thing, Paul, I promise I'm going to give you the microphone. We're looking at, our board has approved, and we're looking at allowing certain corporate sponsorship logos. And we would, of course, bring them to you, but we think you all would agree, in this day and age, that we do need to look at corporate sponsorships. So that's what I've got. I'm going to turn it over to Paul, and you guys be prepared to be wowed.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher.
Thank you very much. That's a great introduction. Again, I'm Paul Bravo. I'm with Rep Services. And I know we've got a short amount of time, so I am going to talk fast, so.
Great, thank you.
If I'm talking too fast, please let me know. So we are partnering with the Kiwanis to do this renovation. It's going to be a very, very interesting space. First, I'm going to tell you a little bit about our company, because I think that's an important part of this. What we do as a, as a company, we try and make sure that, that we design play spaces that make sense, that they meet the needs of all the different children. We're very committed to enhancing children's lives through play. Now, what does that mean? To me, I think that means kids have a lot of restrictions right now to what they can do in terms of play. There's iPads, there's phones, there's everything out there to, I think, interfere with real play. We really want to see kids play with one another. We want to see kids become better friends, better citizens, better people, based on play. And that's, you know, that's a mission that I really hold dear to myself. Our company talks about play shaping us and play shaping what we do. We don't throw a playground up and say, okay, kids, go figure out how to play on it. What we do is we observe how the children play, and then we figure out what type of playground we should put in place there. And that's why we take the approach we've taken. I'm going to talk first about the five-to-twelve area, which is the second phase. This area is, is really geared towards climbing. It's geared towards unscripted play. Here's an overhead, just show you, this is a very, very boring piece to take a look at. Black and white, doesn't really tell you a whole lot about what we're doing. Couple other pictures here that are basically the same. This shows you what's really going to happen. This is what I think shows you what a playground should look like. To the left, we have what's called a crab trap, and I'll explain that a little bit more in a minute. In the middle is our linked alpha towers. Then to the, the right is some nature play. The linked alpha towers, what that gives us is the perceived risk that children are looking for. I've got a ten-year-old, and as cool as he thinks he is, he may climb something that's really, really tall. He's going to be afraid. I don't want to put him in a situation where he's actually in jeopardy, but I want to give him the opportunity to feel like he's up high, and that he's doing something that's challenging. The first slide, the slide, the double slide that's on the right-hand side there, that slide is at eight feet tall. The next slide is at ten feet tall, the tube slide. So it gives the children something to do that is higher. And that little bridge in between, you can see through the slats as you're going across it. So you can see the ground, again, at perceived risk. The piece that's in front here, that's on the right-hand side, is called a crab trap. The crab trap is 100% unscripted play. I grew up with playgrounds where you went up the stairs, you got to a deck, you went down the slide. Then you went to the climber, went up the climber, got to the deck, went down the slide. It was very scripted play. With the crab trap, you can, you can access that piece of, of play equipment from a lot of different spots. You can go inside it, you can climb through it, you can climb over it. There's a lot of different ways you can interact with that. Adults look at this and say, I don't know what to do with it. Kids look at this, and they say, this is exciting. Kids love this type of thing. And it gets them out of that, that scripted mindset. Now, you will see a couple of other things here in the front. There's a couple of little seats. Those seats actually spin. And there's a couple of things in the back. They're upright, and they spin as well. The reason we have those in the play area, there are kids who aren't going to be as active. There's kids who are going to want to be off to the side a little bit, that aren't going to want to be in the middle of everything. For those children, we need to have something for them to do and still be part of the play environment. Those kids may get drawn into the play environment after seeing what the other kids are doing, but we can't just have them sitting on a bench. They're sitting on a bench that doesn't move. They're not getting off that bench. They're sitting in this equipment, and it does move. They're much more likely to get up and get involved with the other children. This gives you a, a perspective of the nature play, which I think is a huge part of, of any play space. I try and have as much nature play as possible. This is glass reinforced concrete, so it's not real rocks, but they look very, very real. And it gives, again, children unscripted play. You can climb the rocks, jump off the rocks, climb around, climb between, climb over the bridge. It gives you the ability to do different things when you're interacting with that. And once again, we're allowing the children to get active and moving. We also want the parents to have the opportunity to see what's going on. Right now, there's two separate play areas, and there's benches in those two different play areas. What we're proposing is that we put benches in between the play areas, so the parents can sit there and observe children in both play areas. I've been to the park a handful of times, and I've seen, you know, Johnny's over here. He's, he's four years old, so Mom's sitting over by where Johnny is. Well, Tommy's on the other playground, and he's running around, and she's not that close to him. This will be in between the two play spaces, and make it much easier for the parents to keep track of all their children. The two-to-five area is going to be Phase One, and I think this is a really, really cool area. With two to five children, what we're trying to do is, is give them the ability to use their minds as much as their bodies. So creative play is a huge part of this. Again, a couple of boring overheads, just to, to kind of break up the pace a little bit. But then we've got the actual play space itself. You see the swings over to the left-hand side. We've got two different types of swings. These are not the swings we, we grew up with. They're not the belt swings. You just sat there, and you swung all by yourself, and hoped your brother ran in front of you so he could kick them. These are, we have toddler swings there for the youngest kids. Then we also have the friendship swings. Friendship swings allow, instead of a one-to-one activity, one child to one piece of equipment, now it's two, two kids, or it's Mom and Dad, Mom and Dad and a kid. Let's say you have somebody that has some mobility issues. You can place them in that swing, and they can swing with somebody else. Now they can interact with other folks. I love those swings. I think those are, those are really something that, that kind of sets this play area apart. The boat up in front is completely custom. We'll talk about, a little bit more about that in a minute. Right behind that is what's called the Motion. That's one of our catalog pieces. But I think it's a really, really cool piece, and that's why we placed it in this play space. I'll talk about it in a minute. Behind that is our fire station in Market Cafe. The boat, I, many of you may recognize that name. We, there's an individual who wants to be part of the project, and they donated some money towards the project. So we decided to throw their name on the back of this boat. This is completely designed from the ground up, based on what the members of the Kiwanis were looking for. So this is a fully accessible play space. Anyone who has a mobility issue can, can bring a wheelchair or any other type of wheel device into the boat. There are seats on the edge. There's a steering wheel. There's different things they can interact with. Again, creative play, a big part of this. Right behind that is the Motion. The Motion is a very compact piece with a lot of play value. The favorite part of it for me is there's a Hot Wheels track that is integrated into the playset. When I was growing up, I had Hot Wheels all over the place. My son, who's ten, still has Hot Wheels all over the place, even though he doesn't play with them. That's a, that's one of the pieces that I think is just really, really neat, because it allows kids who are a little bit younger to climb, play, and then do some things they do at home, but they're doing them in a different environment. And then this is, I think, kind of the, this is the flagship of this, of this entire playground, and for a couple of reasons. One, we've made this very, very Stewart-oriented. We've taken the colors of the Stewart fire trucks, and we've placed that in, in this project. The public safety buildings, from what I understand, we, we came pretty close to those colors as well. Now, there's a couple of things on here that, that are secrets. You're not supposed to tell anyone, so please. Yeah, okay. So you have permission. On the doghouse, there's a name on there. It's Harley. Harley is actually the dog that the, that the firefighters had in their, in their firehouse for a long time. We decided to go ahead and throw him on there as a tribute to that dog, and I'm a dog guy, so I love that. If you see at the front of the engine, it actually says Engine E1, which is the, the Stewart fire engine. So we've done a lot of things to customize this towards Stewart and towards your town. We've done a lot of things that I think make it a little more personal, a little more. When kids are playing, again, creative play, they can be a fireman. And then they can go, and they can see the firehouse, and they can see the trucks that look the same way. It's just a great way to make that connection. We do have that perceived risk we're looking for. Even for the younger kids, they want perceived risk. So that tunnel, when they climb through there, they can see down to the ground. Is it that high? No, it's about this high off the ground. And they can't fall out of it, but they can see the ground, so it, it makes them feel like they're a little older, a little cooler. Again, creative play is the, is the emphasis here. The, between the firehouse and the Market Cafe, there's a lot of little activities in there. But we're really trying to encourage the kids to use their minds more than anything else. Now, the sensory area is an area that, that really, for me, is very personal. I have a godson who's autistic. And when we, when he was growing up, we would go to parks, and there was never anywhere for him to play. He was always off on the side, sitting on a bench, watching the other kids play, or just trying to stay out of the way. He didn't enjoy all the activity and everything else. So we've created a space that's near the two-to-five area, but it's, it's designed specifically for kids that have maybe some sensory issues. They might be on the spectrum. We have two of the spinning chairs. One of the things that, that, that we've seen, children who are on the spectrum, they like to spin. It's very centering for them. So we've added some of those chairs. And then the, the main part there, it's a sensory center. And there's a number of different panels there that have different textures, different colors. You can spin the wheel, and the colors change, but it's all very non-threatening. This area where this is going is currently a butterfly garden, and there will be a greenery around the outside of it, to keep it a very serene, very quiet, very calming area. I think this is, it, it's, it's one of the smaller areas, but I, I really like this area. I like the fact that this is, this was put into the park, because I think there's a lot of kids that really need that, that little bit of a break. And when you go to a normal play space, you don't have that. So we focus on five different things when it comes to playgrounds. One of them is sensory. And obviously, that's colors, that's, you know, the visual simulation, it's, it's, you know, different textures, things like that. We've done that with this play space. Motor skills, that's a given. We want kids to be able to exercise and move and use their bodies different ways, work on their balance, work on cardiovascular, their cardiovascular conditioning. Cognitive skills, problem-solving. The crab trap is fantastic for that. How do they get from this point to that point? How do they navigate a certain area of that crab trap? You know, things like that are very, very important for children's development. Strength. Again, we are in the iPad and iPhone world right now. There's a trend going across the country right now towards overhead climbers and things like that, because for about the last five to 10 years, they've been taking them out of parks, because kids weren't falling off of them, because they didn't have any upper body strength, because they were sitting down, and they're playing Xbox instead of being in the parks. So there's really a trend towards strength training in these parks, but you have to make it fun. And the last thing is social, social emotional skills. I have a ten-year-old. He's an only child. And I can tell you, through the course of this pandemic, he has regressed in terms of how he interacts with other kids. He just hasn't had the ability to do that. Playground should be a place where you grow those skills, and where children have the opportunity to, to negotiate with one another without a parent involved. I want to go on that slide. Well, no, I want to go on that slide. Okay, well, one of us has to go. The other one's got to give, give a little. How does that happen in a playground? That encourages those skills. Also cooperation, that's a big thing as well. So those are the different things that we try and stress in this playground, in playgrounds. We've hit all those marks in this play space. Thank you for listening, and I'm more than willing to take any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Bravo.
Sir.
Any questions?
Ms. Fisher, would you thank Captain Glenn Cameron for me, for the clear support he has for this project?
Glenn and Jennifer Cameron.
Yes.
I love you, Troy.
I love the boat.
I'm sorry. I was looking at Troy. I'm so sorry. Just hear Matheson. Definitely.
We've got similar suits.
And then Commissioner McDonald?
First of all, great-looking project. I was here five years ago, five, six years ago, when we got approved and did the, the Barrier Free Park. And I don't have kids, so I don't, you know, parks aren't in my wheelhouse, but I have to say, it amazes me how much that park gets used, and how we, and also how well you guys have done in your fundraising. And I'm very excited. You guys are getting there, and I think this is an exciting project. And I look forward to the city partnering with Kiwanis to, to, to get this moved forward. But quick, just on a, techno, what is the, are they made of? It's like, is it the same kind of plastic as the, as the other park? As the other equipment on the park, the Barrier Free stuff, or?
So it depends what, what we're actually looking at. The, the alpha towers, those are, those are going to be steel. And then there's different cabling, polyethylene. There is some rotamolded plastic as well. I try to stay away from rotamolded plastic as much as possible in Florida, just because it gets hot, and it does get brittle over time. There is a great warranty, but, you know, we'd rather have the park be up and running than have to replace parts, so.
Great. And then the, underneath the equipment would be the same kind of foam with the artificial turf as well?
We're actually leaning towards a port-in-place rubber. That's a product we're going to be putting in, in the park. That allows for some different designs and things like that, if we want to do that. And also, if we do need to replace a piece of equipment, it makes it easier to replace that piece of equipment and then put new surfacing in without cutting the, the existing turf, as it were.
Okay, thank you. From a maintenance standpoint, we've not been too pleased with the current situation over there. Commissioners, the reason I asked Ms. Fisher to come and bring this is because that there is a, a master plan for Kiwanis that was commission-approved, and this kind of changes that site plan. So I wanted to make sure you guys had the opportunity to see the revisions. Does the, Ms. Fisher, does the $250,000 for Phase One include the poor and play and the sail shades?
Yes, it does, for the totlot area.
Not the shade, just the?
Does it include the shade? Okay.
But it does the poor and play. Okay.
How many pieces? I'm looking at this, eight, nine, ten?
Got to get to the mic.
How many pieces, or, I don't want to call it pieces, all the different? Well, there's like? All the different, um, well, there's like eight, nine, 10, 11, 12. What I'm asking you, all that you showed this is all that's going to be at that part?
We've got a lot packed in there. So in the sensory area, there's, there's currently three different pieces in sensory area. Um, we are talking about adding a bench as well in that area. In the, um, the two to five area, we have, let's see, we've got the, the boat. We've got, um, the motion. We've got the market, um, market cafe and firehouse. And we have the swings, uh, the swings as well. And then in the, the five to 12 area, we have the Alpha Link Towers. We have four of the spinning apparatus. We have the nature play. Then we also have the, um, crab trap.
The, the spinning apparatus, is that, um, like for the handicapped children too? And, and the autistic?
So the seated, this, all the, um, the spinning seats, those are very, very, um, easy to transfer someone to one of those. The, the two that were in the back, they're, they're taller and they're, they're made for standing. I wouldn't necessarily say that those would be for somebody who has a mobility issue. Those are more for, um, for somebody that, that would be able bodied. But, um, you know, if you have somebody that, that, that would be on the spectrum, they might enjoy that. The problem is, a lot of times if you're on the spectrum, balance is an issue as well. So, um, as long as they don't have a balance issue, the, the uprights would be fine as well.
I see a little girl, um, in a wheelchair where she can pull right up and, uh, and, and play. It's really nice. Thank it a lot.
May I just share that on our website, one of our Kuanis is the owner of Artistic Visions. And there's a 3D drone integrated panorama that you can actually go in. Have you seen it? You can go in and really look closely at the equipment and our vision. So that's another opportunity to fine tune.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I just want to again, thank the Kuanis and thank you for your vision. I wanted to complete the plan and all your input and fundraising. And I know that Kuanis Park just gets a lot of usage and I really appreciate what you're doing. But, um, whenever you finish your plan, we have a lot of space elsewhere in the city. If you want to continue that partnership, I know that we have a plan for 10th street and we're trying to work on that. But if we'll continue that partnership, uh, we'd really appreciate that because I, I just know it's, you're really probably trying to cram things to get things put in there and to meet that, that ma- master plan. So, um, I, I was going to ask the same question the commissioner asked about the, the background padding that you're putting everything on. And each one of those things, I know I looked at the plan. It's about what, about 10 feet or so for each one of those where they sit on the area around them?
So there's something called a use zone in that, that is, um, the restriction that we have to have. There's got to be a certain amount of space between the play area and any other piece of equipment. So you will see on the, on the, um, 2Ds, there was dotted lines around the equipment. That designates the use zone for each one of those pieces of equipment. Some equipment can overlap use zones a little bit, depending on what it is. But for the most part, I like to spread it out. I want there to be room in between for kids to run and play and be kids.
And green area.
And green area.
I want to say one more thing too. My grandchildren live way out west of town. And when they come to see me, I live very close to that, they always want to go there. All the kids of Martin County want to go to the Kuanis Park. I don't care if they're in Hope Town or Indian Town. That's where they want to go. So it's a fabulous park. And I thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'm getting a side eye from the police chief over here. So I just wanted to say that, that the fire union donated money towards that fire truck.
Chief Tummenelli is our guest speaker at Kuanis tomorrow. So we may have some questions along those lines, Chief Tummenelli.
Chief, I'll just say, chief, they're very persuasive.
And chief, we can design a, um, a police car. We've got some great ideas, so.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay, let's move on to comments by our city commissioners. Commissioner Matheson.
Okay. Well, first, again, I'd like to thank the two female leaders that are up here, Vice Mayor Clark and Commissioner Bruner, for paving the way for the future and, and doing the hard job that we know it all is at times. And I'd like to thank a, a lot of people in honor of, of me being able to serve the city for another two years. I'm, I'm truly humbled. I'd like to thank my, my friends who supported me and allowed me to bounce ideas off them. I'd like to thank the city staff. The city's doing incredible, I'd say. And clearly the residents believe so as well. And we as commissioners, you know, are truly just a reflection of how good the staff is. We take the compliments at times that we don't necessarily deserve credit for, and we bear the brunt at times. That maybe we do deserve credit for. But the five of us up here are nothing without the excellent staff and, and directors that we have in the city here. And I'm honored to be part of that team again into the future. Um, I'd also really like to thank my, my family. My wife was here for a hot minute. But I'm sure she's gone home to my two lovely daughters, who I look forward to playing with at Kuanis Park over the near future. I get all my inspiration from them and really everything positive about me comes from my wife. I'll readily admit that. And also my parents and in-laws were incredibly supportive during this entire process. And I'm so thankful for all the Stewart residents who supported me again in my recent election. I'll continue to do my best, uh, to work for you for the next two years. Other than that, I am depressed right after I got elected. I got a call from Lieutenant Colonel Polk. I tend to talk about the lake during my public comment time. And the lake is a little over 14 feet. He'd been warning me of this all summer and I've been doing my best to relay it to my fellow commissioners. The S80 structure is, is closed as of now. Um, I think there's actually a discrepancy in the reading on one of the websites. But they're regulating the C44 canal our direction. The lake is, is at even level with the canal or actually above it now. Very thankful that we're not having a hurricane at the moment, uh, impact north of the lake. But I've been doing my best. I reached out to Drew Bartlett before the weekend. Asked him if they are and to ensure me that they're exploring all other options to regulate the C44 canal. Cockins Water Farm is being used to its full capacity. That's kind of a fraction of what we really need, but at least it's in use. The C44 STA, not the reservoir, but the, the stormwater treatment area is taking water. They can only take so much without destroying the littoral vegetation that would purify the water. But they are taking water and, um, I'll keep in communication with him and others at the district and the core. You know, I'm just thankful that, you know, we started this wet season at the lake height that we did. Or else what I'm saying now, my, I might've had to say a month ago with the rains we've had this summer. But we'll continue to do our best here and pressure other government agencies to look out for Stewart's health and safety along the river. And that's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, before we move on, I would just like to recognize, I'm sorry I haven't done so. We have a very special guest today. Incognito, it appears, our Board of County Commissioners, Commissioner Campy in the back. So thank you for joining us today. Commissioner McDonald.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I'm going to echo some of the comments that Commissioner Matheson made and just say thank you to so many people. Have, there's so many residents of Stewart voted for me and gave me the opportunity to return to the city commission. It's, uh, I'm, I'm humbled, uh, grateful and excited all at the same time. My wife, Portia, was here earlier and I was so grateful for all the support and, uh, that she gave me and, and so many friends and including a couple of people that are here in the room. Commissioner Campy, uh, thank you so much for all of your, uh, your support and counsel over so many years. So I appreciate that. Judge Roby for coming tonight and swearing us in. Uh, I had asked him to do that and that was, uh, very nice of him to do that as well. But most importantly, the, the wonderful, warm welcome I've received from the city staff. Uh, it, uh, they, they've really made me feel at home in the couple of days that I've, uh, been hanging around City Hall, lurking, so to speak, and, uh, and, uh, getting up to speed. So everyone in the city staff, it's pretty amazing. And Dave Peters, I don't know if he's still around, but, uh, uh, you know, it was, it was great to see all that love for Dave Peters with all the members of Public Works here, because he's done such a great job for the city. But, uh, to my fellow commissioners, uh, my colleagues, uh, I'm very much looking forward to working with you all. Commissioner Matheson, we were competitors, not we're colleagues. And I'm very excited to be here working with you and, and all of you. And, uh, I'm really, after sitting with, uh, Manager Dias and, uh, hearing about a lot of the stuff that's in work and getting up to speed, there's been a lot of really nice progress on, on a lot of issues, things that, uh, we were working on before I left and, and new initiatives. So I look forward to jumping right in and getting up to speed and, uh, and helping move these projects and these initiatives forward in a positive manner that, uh, improves the city of Stewart. It's, like I said, very many positive changes. Interestingly enough, one of the, uh, one of the phone calls I received after the election was from, uh, a gentleman by the name of Jeremy Sweeting. And he's the, uh, Chief Counselor or the Mayor of Hope Town District in the Bahamas. And it was five years ago this month that we created that, uh, that, uh, that agreement. And, and as he was telling me, he really wishes he could come over and, and we could come back and forth. But between the COVID and the devastation from Dorian, uh, they're still rebuilding and, but, uh, Man of War, where he lives is, he said is, uh, is really coming along, but rest of the Abacos is still has far, far to go. Let's see, a couple of other things here, just, um, you know, I know Don Quazos here in the room and he's the find commissioner. And maybe he'll come up under public comment and tell us how we're doing with our grants. I just put him on the spot. But, uh, but I kind of know, because he's, I talked to him a little bit earlier. And then two last things before I finish up. One is on the agenda tonight, item 16. I spoke on this at the last commission meeting under public comment. Right now I have some concerns and, um, probably a no vote, but I need some time to study it. And if the commissioner would allow us to continue that to the next meeting, that way I can, uh, properly make sure I thoroughly understand it rather than just coming in and voting no on it.
Motion, I'll support it.
Oh, well, it will, just let me finish up. So, and, um, and then finally, uh, only been, uh, only been elected less than a week and I've received a request from a resident about, uh, and I agree with this request about putting a, uh, park bench, uh, along Palm City Road. There's a lot of, uh, senior citizens that are walking up and down that road. I talked to, uh, uh, Manager Dias and he, uh, talked to Milton about it. And I guess there's an issue, uh, that, uh, one of the issues is it's actually because it's a county road, it's county right of way. So we need to get, uh, permission from the county to, so. So we, we got a thumbs up from, uh, from, uh, Commissioner Campy, so.
Yeah, we need two more.
So we'll just take that one to the bank. And, uh, and if, and if we need a motion to continue that item, I'll make that a motion. Item 16.
I have a motion to continue.
Second.
Continue item 16. Do you have a date certain or?
Uh, just the next meeting. I just need, I just need a, a couple of days to talk with staff.
I have a motion to continue item 16 to the next meeting by Commissioner McDonald and a second by the Vice Mayor. I just want to ask staff, is, does this, um, I guess that we call it a delay, have any bearing on any sort of reporting requirements or anything we need to do with the state?
There's no, this item is really brought forward to, um, uh, from staff to assist both developers and the commission move forward with PUD agreements.
Great.
So, uh, open to any discussion on that, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, before we move on, if, if there are people here who have any comments on 16 and won't be here for the next meeting, they can make their comments today for the record.
I suppose so. If they're here to hear it, yeah, sure. Is there any further discussion before we call the?
I would like to, uh, add to that. I'm glad, um, Commissioner, you brought that up and congratulations. I'm glad you're here. Because when you all spoke last week and I, I gave it some more thought and I've talked to a couple of other people. So, um, I, I would like some time too. So I appreciate that. And congratulations to, uh, Mr. Matheson also.
Thank you.
Um, if there's anybody that would like to give public comment online regarding this motion, please raise your hand using the little raise your hand button. Is there anybody here in person that would like to make a comment on this motion? None online? Can we just do it all in favor, I guess? Yeah, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
And that's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Bruner? Comment? Any general comment?
No, I, um, it, uh, it's been a very, um, when, when, when the politics all come up, you know, all the signs everywhere and, and all the stuff you hear and say and everything, it's just, uh, it's so glad when it's over. But, um, as a politician here at the city, we have to do it every couple of years. Maybe, uh, well, now it's going to be every four years, I think. But anyway, that's it. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Commissioner. Vice Mayor?
Yes, thank you. First, I want to, um, commend the county CRA and the county for coordinating with us and coming to us on the arts project that they brought to us at the earlier meeting. For the CRA meeting, I think it's going to be a good thing for the downtown area and for the use of our gazebo area. And I just wanted to thank the county for doing that. Next, I want to thank Mr. Dave Peters again and his department. I know that, um, there's a, two hurricanes or two storms, I will call it. I don't know how qualified they are now at this point, but there are two storms on the West Coast. And we know that we worry when things happen here with the public works and the need for public works, the need for, of foreign emergency. And it was just heartwarming to see Dave Peters' staff and everyone congratulating him. And we know the kind of hard work that they do. So city manager, thank you so much for honoring Mr. Peters and we appreciate that. Speaking of that, I think it probably wasn't maybe one or two years ago around this time. We were thinking of getting you started to, to work in the city manager position. You started early September, right right around this, this time of year. Yeah, so, uh, we thank you for that. I just want to congratulate all of us, but especially those who had, um, opponents. And Mr. Matheson, Mr. McDonald, who came back again for, on the commission. And for the mayor and myself who were unopposed, I just want to thank you for running. And I especially want to thank those who run against you. It is hard to have opponents. And it's also hard to make that decision to run for an office and to truly run and to say that you want to represent and to do something. So I just want to thank everybody because that kind of keeps our system going. It keeps democracy going. And I really appreciate that we had, that I know, like, um, Commissioner Bruner says, it's tough to see all the signs and everything. But if we really mean to make our community go forward, it is so important. I just want to thank everyone who participated in that process and especially the residents who continuously support and who come out and those who vote. I really, really want to thank you. I also want to thank people who come out to our public meetings, whether you're here in person and many people can't come because of COVID or whether you're on the line, um, via Zoom or by phone. It is so important to make sure that all of us are here and that we're participating. I, it is just very important and it makes our meetings more meaningful. And we just thank you for that. I want to say that, just a bit of sad news for me. I just wanted to bring it up. I didn't, um, discuss this with the family. But I know that for, in the East Stewart area, uh, in the past few weeks, we had a lot, many people have passed. But I just wanted to bring to attention that Ms. Norma Davis, who is the wife of Reverend Davis from St. Paul Amy Church, they're a longstanding family in the community and she's no longer with us. And I just wanted to, um, just say that she really lived a good life in the city of Stewart. And her entire family up and down the line, they've. And her entire family up and down the line, they've participated in one way or another in activities in the community. And she's going to be missed in the community. And I just wanted to bring that up because sometimes when families, when one person is lost from a family, sometimes that breaks a sense of tradition. But I hope that the Davis family will remain strong and that others will continue to work hard and to keep the tradition going. Speaking of longevity, but for your break in service on the commission, you and I would have been the senior persons. I think I'm the senior person now, and I thank everyone for their support. I really, really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I would like to extend a congratulations to my colleagues, new and new and old. And and thanks to those who ran and to our our new public servants, new and old at the county and in our constitutional offices. I would also like to bemoan a little bit that the signs, you know, I just that all that plastic, all those signs now are just going to go into the trash. And I just hate that. Well, some people keep them and reuse them, which is nice. I was very, very proud to issue a proclamation for the Women's Suffrage Centennial. This is a what an important anniversary, what an important moment to recognize that our our country, it is always, it is always our work to make this country more perfect and that our rights are never guaranteed and they must be fought for and reaffirmed. And so I just want to say in my comments, a thank you and to honor all of those brave women and their allies that fought so long ago and continued, had to continue to fight for their right to vote so that it would be protected. I'd like to extend a little apology to Mr. Dias and to some of the other folks that I've been bugging nonstop over the last week. I just recently heard about the Women's Centennial, Women's Suffrage Centennial Commission has a wonderful program called Forward Into Light. And although we celebrated the centennial last Tuesday, Election Day, the 18th, which was the day that Tennessee, the final state needed to ratify, the 19th Amendment ratified it. Actually, Women's Equality Day is celebrated on the 26th, this Wednesday, because that was the day that the ratification was declared as part of the Constitution. So in 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 honor of that, we are participating in the Forward Into Light campaign. I'm very proud that the little city of Stewart is a part of it. We will be lighting up City Hall, our fountains, and we are just about finished getting everything in order to be able to light the Roosevelt Bridge, which is very exciting. We have a sponsor lined up for that. And if anybody would like to help me get on a boat maybe tomorrow and put the put the lenses up, that would be great. But it's just a wonderful thing to do, and I'm glad that we're going to have a big show here in Martin County. Vicky Davis said that she will have the supervisor's office lit up very appropriately. I've spoken with Kai Fontaine at the Lyric. They will light up their interior. And I believe Nancy Terrell of the Arts Council, who was just here earlier, is lighting up. So and and there are some other places throughout the county that are lighting up. Wonderful thing to commemorate. As for order of business, I would like to, I'd like to remember that our voters not only voted, elected our our commissioners now, but also both of our our charter amendments passed, which is great. I was a little, I wasn't sure how that was going to go. And although staff did do some marketing of them and put the information on the website, we now have those amendments that were passed. And it's now staff's job to try to write the enabling ordinances to to amend the charter. So as I'm thinking about the new four-year terms with limits, I'm starting to see how it might be a little difficult for us to get them going on the off year.
So I was going to speak of that, the manager's comments. Both those ordinances will come before you in September, but the two meetings in September. Mr. Mortel has already worked out the rotation to get everyone into the proper alignment.
Okay, great. I knew you'd already be on top of it, mile ahead of me. And then to follow up on on Commissioner Matheson's point. And again, Commissioner, thank you so much for your endless, tireless leadership and representation of the city and our residents and businesses with regard to the river. I we with the rains that we've been having and all the news about the the C-44 and our local water quality, not no St. Discharges from the lake just yet, but perhaps around the corner. I was speaking with a with a constituent who has been involved in the in the water wars for some time. And and they reminded me that, which may or may not be true, but I like the idea, that we as a board have subpoena power. And we have the opportunity to call a hearing. And I think we've demonstrated our position over the course of this year under, you know, largely under your leadership, Commissioner Matheson. I know that you are doing a great job communicating with the interested parties, but I had written down, it might be nice if we could to try to schedule a hearing, a special meeting, to invite Drew Bartlett, to to invite representatives from Hawkins, to invite Colonel Kelly, Lieutenant Colonel Polk, and and reiterate our position, extend the olive branch out to them to come together and and see if we can discuss what's going on and reiterate that, you know, we certainly don't want discharges. Obviously, there are forces beyond our control, but if we could call a hearing, I think that would be.
Mr. Mortel, I'm sure is retreating that right now as his fingers are typing.
Call a hearing, but they're not going to come.
Okay.
As far as the subpoena power, we're redoing chapter two also. And there's a section in chapter two that talks about subpoena power, but it relates to internal investigations.
Got it. Okay, well, you know, I think I don't, I don't know if I necessarily agree that they're not going to come. I think it might be worth.
If you invited them to a hearing, they would come. If you subpoenaed them.
Right. I don't mean to say we need to subpoena them. I say we ought to invite them to a hearing, to a meeting.
I think I and staff or we can, I would like that to to invite them to come present at some point in the near future. The other thing to to those comments. Right after discussions of the lawsuit, and we had some county representatives here and some are in the audience now, thankfully, there was brief talk, but it never followed through with perhaps a board of local elected officials along the Treasure Coast of getting together and communicating and collaborating on the river. And that's something I'd like to, maybe the city would pursue with the county. But I think that that would be helpful for, the more increased communication about this issue, the better. But but, you know, we would also, in theory, maybe have some representatives from Souls Point, Ocean Breeze, and Indian Town on that board to to work together to solve our issue.
May I ask, what are we trying to accomplish with that board?
In theory, Stewart's position, and it still is, is zero discharges in the St. Lucie Estuary except for our local natural basin runoff. And over the past week or so, there is some discrepancy historically with what us and the Corps might define as local natural basin runoff. The Atlantic Ridge, slightly west of this S-80 structure, so to say, I'm just generalizing there. But Western Martin County stretches all the way out to the lake. Right now, we are getting discharges and some term it local basin runoff because the local basin is a nice rectangle that someone drew on a map. But that's not our natural drainage. So all the water coming at us now, draining the C-44 canal, I would argue, and many others would, that that's not natural to go into the St. Lucie Estuary. It wouldn't be coming this way if the C-44, that 26-mile-long canal, or the C-23 weren't created by us. And all that water would have stopped at the Atlantic Ridge and and gone south or stayed west. And we're fighting for zero discharges into our estuary. And collaborating with our local governments might help us get there.
Might I suggest, Commissioner, if we can find a time, have, you know, as staff is, is, if it's the pleasure of this board in general, to have staff schedule a meeting with representatives of the Army Corps and the SFWMD and Hawkins and any other interested parties, that we would also invite elected officials from the county, from our sister municipalities to that meeting as well and continue the conversation. I think maybe that's a good place to start. I've got some of us in the room together. I I'd also, in the in the spirit of having another another kind of focused meeting, I I know I, at our last budget workshop, called into question the the priorities and the and the work of the Stewart Main Street. And again, I, in 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 no way did I mean to try to, I think it was said, kick in the teeth of our local businesses. Of course, we need to support our local businesses. I do think, however, that I would like to have us all work together, perhaps invite. I know Nick Schroth is is away on vacation. I've been on the phone with him. When he returns, perhaps him and his and the new executive director, Kenneth Callahan, could come and and work with us, present to us, and have us provide some input on on the objectives of Stewart Main Street and really start to clarify our deliverables. I'm, you know, I've been clear, I'll be clearer now. I'm not completely satisfied with those deliverables at this point. And if the and if my colleagues could, would like some clarification as well, I think it'd be a good opportunity for us to all do that in a in a meeting. And I don't know if that's something that we need the board consensus to to schedule, or can I just provide that guidance and see if staff can reach out and schedule that meeting?
You want that as a commission item to come back as a D and D, or do you want that as a private staff meeting with?
I would like to have it as a as a meeting, a separate meeting, because by the time we get to D and D, usually it's retired. And I don't know if we can have very good productive discussion.
So like a workshop?
I'd like to have a workshop.
A motion for that consensus on that, or?
And yes.
Is this regarding the service agreement or the Flagler Center or both?
Both, regarding the totality of our relationship with Stewart Main Street.
Well, I heard one say yes for consensus, but I didn't hear anybody else.
I'll say we have a meeting. I mean, I need to get up to speed on the agreement anyway, so.
Great. Thank you. Okay, that's it for me. Mr. Manager?
So we've been getting our door knocked on for special events. And as you know, we have a moratorium on special events right now. Some of them that are right around the corner are smaller events, like the 5K race to the courthouse, the Fall Stewart Stroll, the Bible reading marathon, which aren't really draw, they don't really draw an abundance of people. So I'm kind of just asking the commission's appetite for allowing some of those special events to occur again, determining who and what would be the issue, but.
I'll say that I am, I am open to having events. I would prefer for them to be outdoors. I would certainly say that we need to review where we are right now with regard to the governor's executive order. I believe there is still a limit, a cap on 50, I want to say. But that would be something that we would, that we ought to look at so that we're in compliance with state order. And I would reiterate, you know, our, if it's on public property, our requirement to wear masks, if not, if social distancing is not being followed. That's what I have to say.
What did you say, a 10K race?
5K race. There's several of them, but that's one of them.
Well, I think we should be able to pull that off.
That sounds great.
We're thinking outdoor events.
Outdoor events, a lot of them at other governments have, the permit seekers provided some sort of COVID plan of how they're going to encourage social distancing or protection as much as possible, hand washing stations and stuff like that, if they can assist with any sort of plan.
Sounds like at least three of us are in favor of that particular.
We just pushed the 5K long enough for me to get back in shape.
Just understand it's very difficult for staff when someone submits one of those plans and then 1,000 people show up and, you know, controlling that or making them force them to abide by their plan is a different story.
Mr. City Manager, in terms of an event for mass gathering, normally in September, I would have the reading of the Constitution. And I did talk to Ms. Julie McHenry about that. And we're trying to find a way to either do it like maybe Riverside, so it's open, or have individuals read and have it videotaped, or we haven't figured that out. But we just got busy with COVID and elections. But it is the towards the end of September, mid, late mid-September is Constitution Day. So that was something that we're thinking of doing because we usually do it at 10th Street Rec Center.
Well, Mr. Dias, then should we just say, if the deadline is pressing for that 5K, that we're generally open to it? And then could staff bring us back, you know, a draft of requirements for?
Do you guys want to be the arbitrator of every event that applies, or do you want staff to do it?
Staff.
As long as you're following the requirements, well, basically.
Okay.
I'm just, I want to say I'm glad we're doing this, you know, people, the children are back in school. We want to get back to some normalcy of the best way we can. Everyone here is wearing a mask. We have to trust the people here in Stewart. We're, it's, I just think it's a good thing we need to get out. I've gained 20 pounds sitting around here since March or whatever, but jokingly, yeah. Not jokingly, yes. I'd like to see this very much, and I think our people, this city and the citizens would too.
That's all. Thank you, Mr. Dias. Do I have an approval of the agenda with item 16 being continued?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Matheson and a second by the vice mayor. Is there a public comment on this, on the agenda, on approval of the agenda? If you would like to make a comment online, please raise your hand. Any sir? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, we'll move on to general comments from the public. I do have one green card here, but this is for, it's for an item on the agenda. Is there any general public comment? Yes, sir. If there is any more that would like to give public comment, please approach Ms. Kendall and collect a green card. If you would like to give general public comment online via Zoom, please raise your hand. Mr. Quazo?
Hi, Don Quazo, as the Florida Inland Navigation District representative, being shamed by Mr. McDonald to come up here.
Celebrated.
Celebrated. Your application did very well. It appears that we'll have enough funding to fund all the applications. Since I've been on the board, you know, we used to give back $300,000 or $400,000 to the general fund. And and since I've been on the board, we've been oversubscribed. So it's always been my task to allocate that money equally among the county and the state and the city. This year, I think it's the county, the city's turn to get their stuff funded because I cut you guys last year. So I'm 99% sure you'll get all your money that you requested for your funding application.
A new boat and the boat and the ply.
No, you didn't apply for a boat this year. And this is it for me, so.
Thank you, Mr. Quazo. We appreciate your tireless efforts out there for us, and we'll be sorry to see you go off of that board.
Thank you.
I do have a a comment here by Mr. Donald Duffy. Is this for general or is this for an agenda item? For an item? Okay, yes, sir. Any online? Karen, is that Ms. Hall?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, great, great. At the CRA meeting, you guys were coming in and out, and then I tried to raise my hand. But congratulations all who stood up and raised your right hand and swore to follow the Constitution. Congratulations. It's very exciting to be able to do Zoom, and I want to agree with Commissioner Clark. This helps people who can't get to the meeting. You can still feed your kids, but you can still be part. So I just want to say I'm very thankful for the Zoom and for residents to be able to still be a part. And as far, and I raised my hand at the CRA meeting because I followed Robert Steinberg, and he was talking about the Main Street Agreement, the 70,000. And I was wondering, I I was at the budget meeting on Zoom as well. I see that the Main Street, which we owe so much to. I see that the Main Street, which we owe so much to, they've done so much for us and as going forward, things are different. But the, I noticed there was like a $5,000 going for East Stewart Development. So I wonder about the disparity of the 70 and then the 5,000 and then if someone could tell me. Who's in charge of the, the development of the, over there in East Stewart for that $5,000? Who, who does that and gets the events going, does anyone know?
Karen, it'll eat into your time if we answer, is that okay?
Oh, that's all I wanted, yes. And I'll come help you with your lights tomorrow if you need it, Mayor.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Hall, I don't have the budget, line item budget in front of me right now, but. If you'll, and if nobody has it right away.
It usually is funded to ACES for events that ACES does, so like the Martin Luther King Parade and other activities.
Okay, so, but that's something we can work on like a more, so it's not such a disparity, 70 grand here and five there, I just. Feel like we could do more, but I'll, I guess I'll reach out to Nina at ACES, I did do before, but thank you so much.
Easter used to have their own Main Street and received larger funding, but they dissolve.
Thank you, Ms. Hall, duly noted and, and thank you for running as well. It takes a lot of guts to run for office and so, you know, thank you very much for, for sticking it out.
Absolutely, thank you for running.
Yes, my pleasure.
Are there any other general comments online? I do have a new green card, Sanders Coleman, is this a general item or for the, for an item on the agenda?
It was a comment from, from the Zornian Bowl two weeks ago.
Lone pines, it's on the agenda.
It's for, it's for an agenda item, we'll get to that when we, when we hear that item. Thank you, sir. Do I have a motion for approval of the consent calendar?
Move approval.
Second.
I have a motion by a Vice Mayor and a second by, was that Commissioner Matheson?
Yes.
For consent. Any discussion? Seeing none, any public comment on consent? Okay, well, let's, might as well just hear it now. Hello, yes, please unmute yourself. Hello?
I think he's.
It's Lone Pines.
Brooks. If you're, if you're, would like to give a comment for the Lone Palm item on the agenda, we'll be taking public comment on that item when we hear that here just in a little bit. Okay, we'll reserve your time for that item. No other public comment on consent. Ms. Kendall, will you call the roll, please?
Vice Mayor Clark?
Yes.
Commissioner Bruner?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Commissioner Matheson?
Yes.
Mayor Meyer?
Yes, motion carries unanimously, moving on to item number 12, honoring Dr. Edwin Massey. Mr. Mortel, will you read the resolution?
One second, Paul, can you promote Dr. Massey and Ms. Gaskin up to presenter status, please?
This is resolution number 101-2020, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Stewart, Florida, celebrating Dr. Edwin Massey for his many years of dedication to higher education. At Indian River State College, providing for an effective date and for other purposes.
I was going to read the whole thing.
Mr. Mortel is going to read the whole thing. Can you, can you ask them to activate their cameras, though?
There we go.
There he is. Hello, Dr. Massey.
Hey, Mayor, how you doing, nice to, nice to be with y'all.
Yes, very nice to have you. Mr. Mortel, Mr. Mortel will read the resolution.
The title's been read by the mayor, so I will start with the. Languages, whereas for over 47 years, Dr. Edwin Massey has worked tirelessly to better the lives of Stewart residents through his career at Indian River State College. And whereas Dr. Massey came to Fort Pierce in July of 1973 from Laurel, Mississippi with his wife, Jo, and their two small daughters for a teaching position at the college, which was then called Indian River Community College. And whereas by 1978, Dr. Massey had moved from the classroom to the first of a series of administrative positions and in 1988, at the age of 41. He became the college's third president. During his tenure, the institution formerly known as Indian River Junior College, then Indian River Community College, began awarding four-year bachelor's degrees. And built 71% of the nearly 1.6 million square feet of classroom, lab and operational building space on five campuses and four counties. And whereas Dr. Massey established in partnership with Martin County to locate the Morgue Library on the Chastain Campus in 2001. In addition, he started Clark Advanced Learning Center in 2004, which is recognized as an A high school that ranks highest among all Treasure Coast High Schools. 70% of Clark seniors graduate with an AA degree from Indian River State College concurrent with high school completion. The partnership between the college and Martin County also included the Wolf Center located on the Chastain Campus. Since its opening in 2005, the Wolf Center has provided space for community events. The Chastain Campus now serves 5,000 students annually with 17% of those students being dual enrolled in local high schools. The Chastain Campus, along with the Career Training Center located at Stewart Square, shows Dr. Massey's commitment to higher education in Stewart and Martin County communities. Whereas Dr. Massey has won many awards for the college, including the 2019 Aspen Prize for Excellence Among Community Colleges. Signifying it as the best among the 1,100 community colleges in the country. He gained unanimous approval by the Florida State Board of Education to implement a 20 bachelor's degree, 20 bachelor's degree programs. And receive SACS accreditation for the Indian River State College to become a Level Two Baccalaureate granting institution. Whereas even before he became president, Dr. Massey was lobbying legislators in Tallahassee for state funds. He has been to every legislative station, session in the state Capitol since the mid 1980s. Meeting with Senate Presidents and House Leaders. The Indian River State College Foundation has been, has seen its assets grow more than 1,700% to $116.3 million during his tenure. He meets regularly with work groups and departments across the college and is always planning for the future. And now therefore be it resolved by the City Commission of the City of Stewart, Florida. Does hereby honor Dr. Edwin Massey for his many years of faithful and dedicated service to the Treasure Coast. And for exemplifying outstanding citizenship through his major contributions to our educational services in Stewart, Florida.
Let's stand, stand and applaud you, Dr. Massey.
Thank you, thank you so much. I appreciate. I appreciate all of you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council Members, Manager, Staff that are, that are in the room tonight. I appreciate you so much and thank you for your dedication to public service. Can you give me a little sound check and be sure I'm coming through?
Yes, we can hear you and also I understand that your greatest decision was making Beth, Beth Gaskin the Provost at her, so she didn't.
Saw this little girl that was sitting in a hallway and she was outside a room waiting to get in for an interview and I just sat down. In a chair next to her and we started a conversation. And being from the South and Beth being from Kentucky. We just struck up a, within five minutes, so, you know, I didn't go in and influence the, the interview, but I was determined right then that this girl was going to get the job. She's energized, she's perfect for the job, I know she's very accessible to all of you. And, and has been responsible for many partnerships that we've worked with in Martin County and Stewart. Just, just really quickly, I did come in 1973 and. Pretty, pretty soon after I got here, I was assigned to a work detail made up of faculty members to go down on US1 in Stewart and that was my first time to Stewart. And it was actually to clean a center that was called the Rashman Center. We referred to it as a Rashman Site on US1. And following that, I had the opportunity to teach, I was a professor in the beginning, to teach biology courses at the Rashman Site. And it. It got out in the community that the college was looking for land at that time and there was some land around that site. But the administrators at that time were looking for something a little further south and ended up picking a site. After Mr. Chastain came to us and, and said he had some land, pasture land off of Salerno Road. And the administrator, the president at that time picked that site and that's how we ended up in South Stewart off of Salerno Road. The, the, the honor to actually work with all of you, the honor to represent the college has, has been all mine. I appreciated the job, I appreciated being president, I was listening to the judge a while ago and. I found myself making an oath and I, Ed Massey solemnly swear. That I'm going to do my best in retirement.
Here, here.
Thank you all so much for the resolution and the recognition. I appreciate the college going to be, continue to be a strong partner with you, so don't hesitate to call on Beth and the college to help with economic development, job training, education to move students forward. So thank you so much for this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Massey, thank you, Ms. Gaskin.
May I move approval? Is it?
Yes. I have a motion for approval by Vice Mayor Clark and a second by Commissioner McDonald. Any further discussion? Any public comment? If you would like to make a comment online, please raise your hand. Seeing none? All in favor? Aye opposed? Motion carries unanimously, of course. Moving on to item number 13, Walton Building Relocation, this is a major urban code conditional use approval. Mr. Mortel?
This is resolution number 97-2020, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Stewart, Florida, granting a major urban code conditional use approval to 111 Real Estate Holdings LLC. Owner of the property located in the city of Stewart as described within the attached legal description. Granting approval for the relocation of the historic Walton Building, also known as 33 Degrees. From city right of way at Decker Avenue to the north side of parking lot located at 201 South Albany Avenue. Allowing the front building facade to be set back from the front property line for the facade width. Of the relocated buildings to be less than 80%. Of the lot width and forego the requirement for the minimum building height of two stories. For arcades or glazed openings and balconies along the street facade, providing an effective date, providing for a timetable of relocation, providing for conditions of approval and for other purposes.
Thank you, Mr. Mortel, Mr. Reitz?
Tom Reitz, senior planner for the record, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. This is for the relocation of the Walton Building, otherwise also known as 33 Degrees. To a location at 209 Albany Avenue and Mark Breckville being the owner. So the existing parking lot at 209 Albany Avenue has 36 existing spaces, the relocation of the, of the Walton Building will take up three of those spaces. This is located across the street from Azul and west of the AT&amp;T Building. There's four variances requested by the applicant as the city attorney read in the introduction or the actual resolution, I'll go over them once more quickly. It is to allow the relocated historic building to be set back from the front property line where normally zero setback is required. For the front building to be less than 80% of the lot width. To forego the requirement for a minimum building height of two stories. And to forego the requirement for the arcades, glazed openings and balconies along the street facade that would normally be required in the urban center. So we have the existing parking lot, the relocated building. Mark Breckville will be putting pavers with seating and maybe some shading on, on the front of the building. There will be a grease trap as part of the relocation. And then sewer, sewer connection to the city's utilities. I do want to apologize, this parking legend has been updated, the correct one is in your packets and part of the resolution, basically. There's 36 existing spaces, 32 of those are, are going to be required. So that leaves an additional four parking spaces, even with the relocated building. The project, the relocation was approved by the CRB on August 4th. However, the CRB did strike the requirement for public art. Basically, that would be 1% of the vertical construction of, of the building, in this case, the relocated historic building. There is some questions as to how much that would cost, however, the CRB did eliminate that requirement. And the only other condition of note is the applicant shall obtain a certificate of occupants for the relocated building by August 31st of 2021. This is a shot, one of the oak trees will have to be removed, the middle one, not the closest one to us. And with that, staff recommends approval of resolution 97-2021 with conditions for the relocation of the historic Walton Building, otherwise known as 33 Degrees. The owner, Mark Breckville, is here to answer any questions or staff can answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Reitz. Do my colleagues have any questions for staff or for Mr. Breckville?
So to confirm, I do, Mr. Mayor. Yes. There's 36 parking spaces when the building is there or 36 minus three when the building is added?
I think I know the answer, but I'd prefer to have Mr. Breckville come up and, and explain the parking.
Mr. Breckville, if you would kindly.
Yeah, there's, there's 36 parking places in total back there after the modifications that are made for extra dumpster and things like that. There's a, three, that spot uses, the building itself will take up three parking places, leaving a 33, 33 parking places left. But there's also a parking credit that's available, that's available for moving the historic building of three spaces roughly, so. Or technically from a permitted standpoint at 36 is where we'll be at. And that's taking into consideration modifications that are necessary.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but whatever, why are there 36, I don't understand why there's 36 spaces needed and just so you know, there is no credit in this resolution for the park, for the historic building.
No, there, there is not 36, there's 36 there now, there's only three spaces needed for the building. There are 30, there are basically 36 available spots available after this is done. Of those 36, roughly 23 are required for the building, for the 215 building and the rest are, are open right now is really what we're.
They need to dedicate, I think that Mr. Reitz said there's 32 required for something as well. But we're going to need to have the resolution have an actual dedicate, because right now what you're doing when this resolution passes. Is all of the parking is being taken from the, from the Arches Building. So tomorrow, the Arches Building will have zero parking. And you'll need another public hearing unless we include in this resolution that specific places within this parking lot, because I think your intent is. To reserve that most of this parking, I call it the Arches Building because that's what it was called when it was built. But the other building, the intention was to keep that parking for that building.
Yeah, this building is actually going to become a condominium, it's going to become an office condominium or a retail condominium and will be part of the overall project. The documents are being prepared right now to convert the 215 building and the parking to a condominium, an office condominium and so.
But the 215 building won't have any, this parking lot in this resolution makes it, this parking no longer related to the 215 building. So as of tomorrow, the 215 building will not be in compliance with code because it won't have any parking. Unless this resolution has language that reserves parking from this parking lot for the 215 building. I mean, it's just semantic, but we only have one reading, so I need to address it, I thought I raised the issue in the past.
Yeah, and, and my understanding was that the Condominium Association making the condominium include the parking would then cover that and it would be taken care of, but, well, whatever we need to do with this.
Party to the city.
What?
The Condominium Association is not a party to the city, they won't have anything to do with this resolution, they won't have any authority to. They won't have any authority to make the parking anything other than what this resolution says and that that'll, that it'll be for this restaurant.
Well, what I'm trying to do is just allow that building to be put on this park, this property and to share the parking that I already own on that property. That's what I'm trying to do.
Right, and I don't have any problem with that. I just want it to be clear so that we don't shoot-
Thank you, Mr., thank you, Mr. Mortel and Mr. Breckville. So I, I appreciate your intention. And I appreciate our attorney's shrewdness with the effect of this resolution. So I, I mean, I wasn't aware, I had my own couple of questions and issues with the overall project, but I would say that if we need to have that language included in the resolution that clearly links two fifteen or else, as you say-
Do it on the floor and add the language right now and we don't have to have a second hearing. I just wanna make sure. I don't know if it's twenty-three spaces or thirty-two spaces will be dedicated to the other building.
Well, okay. Before we, before we have that discussion, I'd like to hear from my colleagues on, you know, our just general idea of the project overall.
Parking?
Besides the parking.
I mean, if I'm, I don't drive, so, but if you're pulling up to get a burger, is there gonna be a space allocated and how many spaces?
In the table, it appears that there are three, but let's have staff.
I mean, there's a giant parking lot. I, I think we can figure that out. We have an accountant and attorney though, so that's the big problem. Sorry.
That's true.
I kid.
Attorneys aren't good at math.
Some of my other issues, I'll lay them out to my colleagues. I know it's minimal, but I do disagree with the CRB board. I think public art, a lot of this meeting has been about public art and I think that contribution or sculpture or something i- is relevant. I've read the language and the requirements. I think that's relevant here and I'd also think some sort of shade over the, the front area would be relevant. Both those are-
Over the front patio area?
The front patio. So that's my standing on, on, those are my two issues besides the parking.
Commissioner McDonald, did you?
Go ahead and somebody else come back to me.
Well, I was just, um, what are you doing? I don't understand. Is this gonna be a restaurant or, or what? You bringing that old building back up here to?
Yeah, let me, let me just explain what's going on there. That building was owned by the city and was scheduled to be torn down when New Urban was built.
I remember all that.
I agreed to move the building to preserve it. It's, it's historic from the standpoint that it, and that's why it's the Walton Building, not the thirty-three Degrees, because it's not historic as a burger place. It's historic because Fred Walt was one of the initial contractors in this city. He built the Lyric Theater. He helped to do the con, the outside construction of the Franz Apartments. So there's some, and he was the first business to locate west of the traps. So there's some history with, with him as a contractor and as a business person in town and there's some history with that building. The idea is, I'm trying to preserve it as much as possible in the manner that it is. We are not putting a shade structure on it because there isn't any need to, because we're tucking it under the trees and leaving the trees for shade. That's the whole idea there where we don't have park, we don't have outdoor seating there. This has a couple of seats in the front for people to come up and grab a sandwich and go or, and it, it's initially going to be used as a, as a restaurant, a takeout restaurant. Sue Parks, who used to run Stewart Scoot, is going to operate that out of there and have a limited menu, but it'll be takeout with, with a lot of different things. But, you know, that building historically has been used as a hair salon and all kinds of things. So right now, the intent is for it to be leased as a takeout restaurant.
I mean, that, you can, that old building's gotta, you gotta get, I mean, a restaurant, all the approval for, for a restaurant?
It's four hundred and fifty square feet takeout. It's not that big a deal. All, all you're doing is, is cooking, you know, a limited menu and people are walking up, picking it up, taking it to the park and, and having, and eating food or taking it home.
What kind of food? I mean, what are you cooking?
She's planning on Jersey dogs, she said. She's planning on buffalo wings, real buffalo wings, Philly cheese steaks, root beer floats, waffle sandwiches, some french fries and I forget what else she said. It's a limited menu, done well. She's, she's intending to do it like-
It's mostly walk-up.
It's all walk-up. It's takeout. Yeah, it's strictly takeout.
Will it have a restroom?
Oh, let's, let the vice mayor.
I'm sorry.
Did you ask about a restroom?
Yeah, okay, Commissioner.
It does, it does have a restroom inside for the, for the people that are working. It's not open to the public inside. There's no seating inside. That, so there's no restaurant inside.
And the health department doesn't require you to provide a-
There's a restaurant inside for the, for just for the workers. The most people that work in there at a time is two.
So it'd be similar to like if you had a cart or something?
Yeah.
Then, yes, okay. Can I just say something with regard to your original question, Commissioner Matheson, about the artwork?
Yeah.
Um, Mr. Rick Brill, I know that, and also city manager, if you'd listen. We have, not that our city manager doesn't listen. Budget-wise, maybe Julie. We have the historic plaques that we've done in some places. I know in East Stewart, we did the churches and so on. And I'm thinking that, my suggestion is that in lieu of doing any particular artwork, maybe even in, in the pavement that you do, the paper that you do can be done in such a way that it looks artistic, number one. But if you, if, if there, if a plaque could be designed that talks about the history of that building, the Walton Building, and maybe that alone, just having a little thing, that would be enough. I hope that that would, to me, that would meet some kind of a historic criteria. It won't be something that you look at like a piece of artwork, but it would be enough to, to, to match in with, with historic as well as carrying forth the idea that this is an important piece of our community. So I think a dedication plaque, it doesn't call, we just, it's just the one that you put the words on. So we do this for like three or four hundred dollars with, and if it's something that we can work in collaboration with the city, does that to help out with the historic nature or if it's something that you do, if we, if you, if you agree to do that, we've done them for an M percent, as long as you provide the language, we can put something there that says what the building is all about and that would kind of-
Vice Mayor, can I ask you a question to clarify? Do you mean that in lieu of the public art requirement?
Yeah, in lieu of the public art, yeah.
Yeah, and let's, let me, let me just comment that the CRB looked at this. The reason they, they agreed with me on this thing is that, not necessarily just for this, but we're moving a building a hundred feet. We're not reconstructing anything. We're not building anything new. We're putting a slab down where it goes. There was a slab where it was. You know, so the feeling from the CRB in general was that it's kind of, it's, it's not vertical construction, which is what requires the artwork. Now, as I mentioned to them, first of all, you know, the value of that vertical construction is probably thirty thousand dollars, so we're talking three hundred dollars. But, but second of all, as I said, there is a sailfish marker sitting right next to this building. It's one that my family donated as part of the Sailfish Marker Program. I have no problem putting the information about, I would like to add the information about the Walton Building on that marker because it's right next to the building. It's also, you know, recognizes the Thomas House and it recognizes the, the old church. So I don't have any problem with that, but I think that what the, what some of the CRB members were saying is it, I don't think that the city needs to, should set a precedence that there should be art if you're just moving a historic building. I mean, that, that's something that potentially shouldn't be there.
I have a question for staff. When, when other buildings were moved, such as the Diane Devant's house, did we require public art when they removed, when they relocated that?
No, we didn't, Commissioner, because the Diane Devant House, the old Fish and Lodge, was not considered substantial renovation. And actually, it, the reason was, is that how residential is exempt in our code.
But, okay, even though they were moving them to use them for a commercial purpose? I know that the Diane Devant House is moved as part of a hotel. So I mean, it's being used as a commercial purpose. So that's what I'm just, I just wanna find out what our history is on this.
Yeah, it's clear in the code that a residence is, is exempt. And at the time, the Diane Devant House was being used as a residence and that's why it was exempt when we moved.
When it, when, when was it, when it, when it was moved, it was being used as a residence or when it was after it was moved?
Before it was moved, it was being used as a residence.
Okay, because it was also being used as a place for special events, weddings and so forth as well. So, but after it was moved, it was used as part of Old Colorado Inn as a vacation rental. So, I mean, is that a, I don't know if that is, I mean, that's not technically a commercial use, but I'm just trying to find out what, if we're, if we're maintaining an equitable situation here, so.
I would just mention, I've spent so much money on this thing that I may have to live in it for a few days before it's moved. So does that qualify as residence?
Well, that's probably not art.
If I, if I can jump in, I, you know, I think I'm not really too concerned about, I think the public art component is, is at the bottom of my list with this. For me, this has more to do, and I do appreciate you holding on to this building at, for its historic purposes. My concern here is that, you know, and this was something that came up during the campaign and maybe it wasn't brought up in good faith, but you know, there it was. Is, you know, we as a commission have sometimes been criticized for either not having vision when it comes to design standards for certain parts of our city, especially in the downtown or, and not following through with our design standards. And, you know, for me, my main issue with this, aside from us wanting to preserve and have some adaptive reuse for historic building, is that Joan Jefferson is a major entry point to the city of Stewart. And, you know, we've got Azul off to the side that, that stuck to our code. You know, we've got a, a four-story building next to it. We've got a, you know, two-story building next to it. We've got a, you know, the, the mural and the AT&T, I guess, is the AT&T building there. And there's this parking lot, I understand, but when we, when we approve a building to go down, we need to think about that sitting there for another fifty years. And I need to, I wanna keep us focused on, well, what do we want Joan Jefferson to look like? The fact that we have two stories in our code for that particular piece is an important, is an important design aesthetic. And just because there's a building that needs a home, which I totally appreciate, my question is, is this the, is this the right place for it? You know, even the setback, I would, you know, the setback is an issue too, because it really, it, it deviates from the, from the, the, the planning and trouble that our staff has gone to, to, to put together a, a vision, a look, a feel for, for this important like artery into the city. So, you know, public art, that for me, I can, I can kinda put off to the side, but I'm thinking, you know, if this is gonna be here for, for the long term, how is this also going to impede the future redevelopment of this site to something that really sticks with the code, the vision that we have for this? So I, I mean, I understand your position, Mr. Breckville, and like I say, I appreciate it. I certainly would want staff to address the language for the parking, but for me, this is more a question of, well, where, what is, what is Joan Jefferson gonna look like in fifty years? You know, I want it to look like our vision wants it to look.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
You know, I think maybe this helps, maybe it doesn't, but from a perspective of redevelopment of the site and from that perspective alone, that parking lot is always gonna be needed for the two fifteen building. And so, uh, so there, so there, it's unlikely that there would be any, you know, a new development on, on that site because, any additional development, because with short of, short of a parking garage, maybe if, you know, which I don't see Mr. Breckville putting a parking garage anytime soon on there.
Thought about that, not doing that anymore.
And so from, so I don't think it's gonna hamper any, plus this building sat on Joan Jefferson for-
A hundred years.
Years, a hundred years. So, right on the corner of Joan Jefferson, I should say, not, maybe not directly on it. So, and I, and I, I don't know how Joan, Joan Jefferson herself would feel, but I, but I do know that she was very much into historic preservation. So I think that preserving a building, the, the fact that, uh, while utilizing a, an exist, you know, existing site that I don't foresee getting redeveloped because it really can't. So I don't know if that helps you or not, but, but I think that there's some opportunities here.
Yeah, I would just mention, Mr. Mayor, that just from a practical standpoint, what Troy's talking about is that is the only parking. Literally everybody around me has a parking exemption across the street, the Thomas, but that property can't be there. It's eighteen parking places short. Sailors return has to park over there. You know, Sterling was given a parking exemption when they were for CO'd. So everybody around there doesn't have parking, so that it's unlikely that anything is gonna be there other than parking in the near term because unless we abolish all of the parking and, and then still you gotta park. So there isn't a lot of parking there. There's, I've got extra places there, but those places strictly cover the building itself unless I was able to get some large parking exemption. I have only enough parking places in there to let Basil Ty use some because they were gonna throw them out of their place because they didn't have parking and, and for my office building.
Just to clear the record, who's they are gonna throw, who's they?
The, the landlord was basically going to not allow, he, he didn't wanna extend his lease of parking. He didn't have enough parking. He was twenty-seven parking spaces short or something over there. And so until he just got a variance, but, and he was leasing, so he decided not to lease and they would, he would have, I would have had to throw Basil Ty out of the parking lot had it not been for the fact that, you know, I agreed to set aside some spots for him. But they don't have parking otherwise. So there's nobody up there that has parking. You know, my son's house also is right behind that parking lot. So I'm not gonna put a four-story building behind my grand, you know, where my grandkids are, so that I'm not doing that anyway. So unlikely, as long as I have that and he has that, we're not building anything on that that's of any size. You know, we wouldn't do anything like that. So it's kind of perfect for a historic building like this that literally has been, I wasn't being facetious, it's been at the same site or within, within a hundred feet of it for a hundred years. So it's been there for a long, long time. I would actually argue that maybe I'm grandfathered in and you guys should have to come and ask me about my-
Oh, boy.
I'd go, I wouldn't go with that argument.
I just.
I appreciate the moxie, sir. So it's, well, do my colleagues, okay, we've all talked a little bit, do my colleagues have, I mean, agree with our city attorney that we need that language clarified before we approve? I certainly do.
I can't go approve this. For resolution number ninety-seven twenty twenty, can we have the resolution approved with the language that Mr. Mortel, are you suggesting a language or does staff have a language?
Here's the thing, I, I'm not requiring the language. I'm just telling you that this entire parking lot is what's listed as the exhibit to this resolution. So as soon as this resolution is adopted, unless there's something in the resolution designating certain spaces in this parking lot to apply to that other building, they're essentially being sold to this Walton Building right now.
Okay, so what do we need?
So I don't know how many it is. I, I would leave that up to Tom.
I would ask for a motion to continue this so that staff has time to work on the language so that that is not the case.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, I'll second it, Mr. Meyer, Ms. Matheson.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Matheson and a second by Vice Mayor Clark to continue this item until staff has. Do you wanna do a day certain or you wanna re-advertise?
The next meeting.
Do we have, is, is, is next meeting enough time to?
Yeah.
Day certain for the next, day certain for the next meeting? Is that, is that okay with the motion maker and seconder?
Yeah, may I ask a question to our attorney or the applicant? Why not separate out the building in three spaces? And do it that way and remove that from the current parking lot site?
Well, there's a couple of considerations there. One, it is gonna be a condo. That's, that's the reason I've got it there and I need that parking as part of the condominium association and those people need to share in that cost of maintaining that whole parking lot, including the dumpsters and all that. Second of all, I got a mortgage on the property and just stripping it out, I can't do that without paying down that mortgage and I don't have the money to pay down that mortgage right now to, to strip that out of it. So there would be costs associated with that. So that, that's the main reason I'm not, I'm not doing that. I mean, if we're gonna create some sort of an easement or something like that to allow them to, to park, but like I said, ultimately, all of that's gonna be common property. It's all gonna be part of the association because I need all that- it's all going to be part of the association, because I need all that parking for the building.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to continue this, so that staff can include the language to account for the parking for 215. Is there any public comment on this motion to continue? If you have comment online, please raise your hand. Seeing none, yes. Oh, sorry, I thought, okay. Ms. Kendall, all in favor for a continuance? All in favor?
Yeah.
I opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, and apologies to Mr. Breckball, we'll get this ironed out. Moving on to item number 14, Lone Palm Residential, this is, this is the item that I believe a few folks are here to discuss, or have put in public comment for. Mr. Mortell?
This is ordinance number 2439-2020. An ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Stewart, Florida, amending the city of Stewart's comprehensive plan via a small-scale comprehensive map amendment from residential low to East Stewart, rezoning from residential single-family R1 to single-family and duplex sub-district SFD on the city's official zoning map, and approving a major urban code conditional use for property totaling .72 acres owned by Lone Palm Property Investments LLC, located between Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard and Southeast Sixth Street, west of Palm Beach Road, being more fully described in Exhibit A, attached to allow the development of two duplex lots and three single-family lots, declaring the project to be consistent with the city's comprehensive plan, providing directions to the city clerk, providing for repeal of all ordinances in conflict, providing for severability, providing for an effective date, providing for acceptance by the applicant, and for other purposes.
Thank you, Mr. Mortell. Mr. Mayor? Just quasi-digital.
Yes.
Oh, yes, quasi-digital, thank you for catching that.
I have to swear, I'm looking at one, two, three, four, five, six. Why doesn't everybody just go? Let the record reflect that there are six people being sworn. Please raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth, all truth and nothing but the truth, so have you God? Let the record reflect that all six have testified affirmatively, and if you could please state your name when speaking to the commissioner.
And I, thank you, Mr. Mortell, and I will need to have my colleagues confirm if they've had any ex parte communications to disclose. Commissioner Brunner?
Oh.
Ex parte?
Yes, I have spoken with the builder and staff, and I'm here with an open mind.
Commissioner Matheson?
I've spoken with the applicant, staff, residents, and I just swore an oath that I'm here with an open mind.
Commissioner McDonald?
I spoke with Mr. Quazo, Mr. Dias, and I'm here with an open mind.
Vice Mayor?
I've spoken to staff, I've spoken to residents, Mr. Duffy, Mr. Coleman, I've spoken to the developer, Mr. Thinking of.
Hartman.
Mr. Hartman. I'm here with an open mind.
I have spoken with the applicant and their agent, I'm, well, just the applicants. I've spoken with staff and I've spoken with residents, and I am here with an open mind. Now, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commissioner Stephen Mayer for the record, Development Department, ordinance number 24392020 has been read into the record by the city commi, city attorney, thank you very much. This is a future land use map amendment for rezoning and an urban code conditional use approval all in one. This is the first reading of the ordinance. The applicant is Reed Hartman of Lone Palm Property Investments LLC. The location of the property is a vacant parcel of .72 acres in size. It is in the, it is on the northwest side of Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard and Southeast Palm Beach Road. It also is in between Southeast Sixth Street and Martin Luther King Boulevard Jr. So, that, that is a, the property located right there on that map, as you can see in the red square. The future land use of the property is residential low, as is most of the adjacent properties to the northwest and south, and even to the east, there is a property, that's the Audubon Society, but there is some preserve area as well to the east. The proposal is to change the future land use map to East Stewart, which the, the location of East Stewart land use, there are residential low land use adjacent to the property, again, to the north, a west and south. There is some East Stewart future land use district on Martin Luther King Boulevard, a little bit to the west of the property. There is some zoning, I'll get to the zoning first. The zoning of the property is R1 single-family. To the west is GRO, which is part of the East Stewart District, Sub-District, it's General Residential Office. That property in this kind of teal is GRO. And this is, of course, our police department. This zoning district being proposed is single-family duplex. The site plan is, is in your packets, it's, it, this, the conditional use refers to the site plan as, as what will be built. I will have the applicant present their own site plan in their presentation. But one thing I'd like to note is that the setbacks are on the site plan, and they, at this point, the, what's on the site, what's on the site plan right now does not reflect the GRO setbacks. So, staff would take these site plan setbacks as what we would expect to see. You also see here on the site plan that you have two driveways on MLK, and that is, again, something that we would expect to see in the development of the properties. So, this went to the CRA earlier this month, and the recommendation was to approve ordinance 24392020 with those conditions of approval that are in your packet, in the ordinance. Based on CRA recommendation, staff added clause or condition that would revert the future land use designation and zoning district to the existing future land use and zoning, which is R1, single-family residential, if the project fails to meet the conditional use deadline for the platting of the property. That obviously is a reverter just in case, because if we don't receive the current developer to plat this property, we want it to, to go forward into some new conditional use that has something other than this. So, we would like to revert that back. The condition, there is also a condition that was requested by the CRA to require a hedge along the front properties. Staff added that it should be a three-to-four head, foot hedge for safety reasons, as it would be on the front property lines. This is consistent with what we see in the urban district when we require hedges there, and then also on the side yards adjacent to the R1 property. Also, based on the CRA motion of approval, the recommended future land use and zoning change is for East Stewart and single-family district, a single-family and duplex zoning, rather than the urban district and urban neighborhood zoning that was originally applied for. The ordinance has been modified to reflect that CRA motion. This concludes staff's presentation, but the applicant is here to present. Let me change this over.
Mr. Mayor, while you are doing that, if I can just ask quickly, and I apologize, I stepped up for just a second. The, based, I know it was based on the CRB motion for approval, is the urban neighborhoods, urban district, the elements of that zoning type, do they not comply with the proposed project? Or the choice was to use East Stewart zoning, just because it was preferred to use that? But the urban neighborhoods, urban district would have, would have met the requirements?
So, there are, there are different setbacks between the urban neighborhood and, and the, and the single-family duplex. The differences are slight, but I'll, I'll kind of review them. The urban neighborhood allows for 10-foot front, five-foot sides, and 15 rear. Single-family duplex allows for 15 front, five sides, and 20 rear. But some of that is kind of a moot point, because we also are approving a conditional use that has very specific setbacks based on the site plan. And, and those that are being requested on the site plan are 25-foot front, eight side, and 10 rear. So, whether they fit into one or the other, they actually don't fit into either exactly.
Right.
Um, but the CRA recommended the East Stewart and the single-family duplex.
Thank you, sir. Are there any questions by colleagues for staff or for the applicant, applicant's agent?
As I'm going to present.
Mr. Quazo, do you have anything to present in addition?
I do have a small presentation. Thank you, my name is Don Quazo, I'm here representing the applicant tonight. I, I, excuse me, I've been very lucky in the last part of my career to represent some individuals in this community, been here a long time, one being Kiplingers, and the Hartmans, who have many generations of people in this area. So, it is quite a nice honor to be able to represent them here tonight. We all know where the site is, and the zoning and the land use that were existing. Overall view, because Martin Luther King Boulevard, and I live not far from here, I live on Fifth Street, on a small lot, and, but the Martin Luther King Boulevard definitely has got a mixed-use feel to it. There are a number of many different uses along Martin Luther King Boulevard. I think that this use, well, this continue to make Martin Luther King Boulevard what it is, a great spot. People are a little bit concerned, I've heard about property values, and in my experience, that new construction is always more expensive than existing construction, existing homes there per square foot. So, when someone goes to sell a house, the cost will be taken on these new constructions, you know, the square footage price on these homes when they're sold. So, it should help the neighbors with their property values. The old plot of this area, a very old plot, which Mr. Hartman's family was involved in. The numbers you see on here now are just a little planning analysis we did to find, to show you that we're, we're compatible with the community. The lots are a little smaller than what is existing here, but the square footages of these houses, if you go through, there's a chart in here. If you look at it right, and the dwelling sizes of the houses of all those areas that are listed up, we see the first two are ours, but then, if you look all the way down on the right-hand side, we are really in that range of housing sizes that exists on Martin Luther King. We're not asking for anything smaller, we're not asking for anything bigger, we're trying to fit into the neighborhood as it is. I have said at the CRA building that there are duplexes on this street, as you know, and they are at the other end of, of Martin Luther King Boulevard, but there's multifamily, there's commercial, there's institutional, there's quite a bit of everything along Martin Luther King, which I think makes a city a very suitable place. Again, these are the square footages. Here is the site plan, and we were talking with staff a little bit earlier about this. Because of these setbacks and the change that we agreed to, we would like to, if the board would so agree, to move the four houses, the single-family homes, the three-single-family, a little closer to the road, and make that front setback 15 feet instead of 25 feet. And I would change that site plan if you approved this and back before the second hearing. So, we are obviously doing this plan, and this, and this approval will be tied to this plan, and so that they are, you know what you're getting, the residents know what they're getting, and everybody will have that there. If you looked at the duplex lots, one of the concerns we heard were really early on, was that they didn't, people didn't want four driveways coming out onto Martin Luther King Boulevard. So, we have come up with this, the hedge issue was to kind of block that asphalt from being seen from Martin Luther King Boulevard. There was some concern at, at the meeting, at the CRB meeting, that there would be some site line issues, but there, there really won't be, because we'll move that hedge up close to where the asphalt currently exists. Enough ways, so we can open a door to a car, but not out on Martin Luther King Boulevard. So, when you pull down into that driveway, and again, these people will be able to drive forward onto Martin Luther King Boulevard, as opposed to backing out onto Martin Luther King Boulevard.
Correct. Mr. Quazo, before you move on, if you go back, just to clarify, so what did you say? You'd like to modify the plan so that we're 15-foot setback?
Correct, on the front houses, and that would give the rear setback a little bit bigger, and it would be closer to that zoning code.
Okay. May I ask a question?
Yes.
Mr. Quazo?
Yes.
Don, would that be plenty of room for parking, if you, for the cars to park there? I mean, someone has a small, an SUV or a truck or something?
Yeah, absolutely, because the setback, if you see, was that one here on this?
Yes.
Oh, yes. So, you see that there's a lot of space between the actual edge of pavement and the actual property lot.
Mr., there's no sidewalk there, though, you'd be, would be blocking if someone was parked all the way up near the road? A little bit closer to?
No.
No, okay.
The applicants are saying no. You know, I run there all the time, but that's funny, because I always run in the road. Yeah, the answer is no, we're not going to be parking trucks on the sidewalk. I live, my house is over on Fifth Street, and I can get two cars easily, but the car is actually, my truck, as you know, is actually in the right-of-way when it's parked everywhere.
What's your setback on your house?
I think it's 25, I think, I'm not sure, I didn't do it. I just bought it, sorry. Again, here's a bigger picture of that, of that driveway.
And what is the benefit, again, of changing it from 25 to 15?
Staff was a little concerned about the back setback being only six, and then, and Mr. Reed, Mr. Hartman was also a little concerned that the yard in the back may be a little small.
I agree.
You know, so, yes. Yeah, and these are our single families. For our single-family lot, the rear setback is only 16.
Just so that I can just double back with staff, so the, the proposal to, to move the buildings forward, staff is amenable to that, and we don't conflict with our code regarding put the shorter driveway?
Yes, we are, we are in agreement with, we, we would be in agreement with that, that 15 feet would be amenable. Of, of note, not only is the single-family duplex front setback 15 feet, but also even in R1 property, if you were to provide a front porch of half, half the facade with, you can actually go to 15 feet in standard code.
For R1A?
For even R1.
For R1?
For R1.
If you provide a front porch?
If you, if you provide a front porch, you can go to 15 feet, yeah.
Okay.
I live right down the street from, from there, I'm on Seventh Street, and I go by there five or six times a day. I think this would be a real, a real nice asset there in the community. I will make a motion to approve 20, ordinance 2439-2020.
A second motion. I have a motion by Commissioner Brunner, and a second by Commissioner McDonald. Well, we do have some public comment, which we'll call before we call the vote, but is there any, are there any more questions from my colleagues?
I have one, one more question.
Commissioner?
Do you know what the price point is on this, are they going to be rentals or sale?
Can you, please, come and join us at the microphone, sir.
Reed Hartman, for the record. As far as the duplexes, I don't, I don't really have a price point on those, but on the single-family, I'm guessing for new construction, somewhere between $275 and $350, plus or minus whether you're on Palm Beach Road or the further lot into the west.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Hartman, will they have front porches?
I intend, yes, sir, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Hartman.
Mr. Mayor, staff, I know you've probably said this already, but, but I anticipate that maybe some of the questions that I've had from people are just the definition of the East Stewart land use designation itself. People just want to hear what that is, and I think people who are listening at home, or maybe, and to, again, amplify the difference between that and the residential low, just so that, you know, because they had a choice, I think the mayor asked about using another land use category, but if you could just say again, what is, what and where the East Stewart designation is, and why that, you know, I guess the developer, Don, explained why they chose that particular category. But the categories is there, it's stated for a particular reason, so.
Right.
And while they're pulling the code, Commissioner, the East Stewart land use district has several criteria. And while they're pulling the code, Commissioner, the East Stewart land use district has several criteria. It's not a definition as much as it has criteria regarding setbacks, minimum lot size, uh, height, restrictions, densities, and things like that, just like the others. The reason that the uh, staff recommended that they use the East Stewart land use was because at the CRB board, the CRB recommended that they use East Stewart land use, cause it was the closest um, urban district to this property. And when they wanted to use the urban neighborhood district, although it kind of may have fit their description better, it was questioned as to whether or not it would be spot zoning, since the closest urban neighborhood is Potsdam area. And East Stewart literally was next door to it, so that was the logic came through. But the East Stewart land use doesn't actually have a definition, I think they can probably read the title of it.
I could, I could read the intent of the East Stewart district?
Yes, sir.
The purpose of this code, or as it refers to the East Stewart district, is to encourage redevelopment, infill development, small business development, affordable housing, historic preservation and restoration, and to promote stability within the East Stewart community by providing standards and development incentives that are not otherwise available. This code provides development incentives, allows for the replication of historic buildings, and calls for historically relevant, durable construction, which is harmonious with the architectural heritage of East Stewart. Um, as the, as the city attorney mentioned, there are specific setbacks um, and requirements, and also use, uses and density that are associated with the single-family district, which is what we're recommending. Um, it's seventeen units per acre as a density, that's not what the applicant is going for, the, the, but that's, uh, it's well within that. Uh, they're going for around ten units per acre rather than seventeen. The setbacks are something that we're talking about and negotiating with um, on the floor. But the single-family district allows for fifteen feet front, five feet side, and twenty. Um, they're trying to get actually closer to that, um, those numbers.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, thank you, Vice Mayor. Um, Commissioner Matheson, you're looking at me, do you have a?
I mean, I, I just wanna, these are, originally were plotted as fifty-foot wide lots.
That's correct.
And that seems to be the major gist of the project, is to go back to the original plot, um, which would need to be in the East Stewart overlay zoning district to do that, to build more affordable houses for sale.
Yes. Um, I'll take public comment now, uh, first up, we have Mr. Donald Duffy. Mr. Duffy, if you'd come up and?
Thank you, sir. Donald Duffy, nine sixteen, Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard. I have forgotten about the meeting today, cause I've been homesick for the last couple of days, but I decided to jump up at the last minute and come anyways. You're saying that this, this project is going on the East Stewart, well, overlay or whatever you call it, correct? So what I'm saying is, so in order for them to pass the project, they're going on the East Stewart in order to pass this project. But my thing is, if it's zone for R1 residential, and that's what it originally was for, the property it was planted for, so why not use that? Instead of going around, just saying what it is. Okay, he wanna build, we can't build it on a R1, so therefore, we're gonna go a couple of blocks down, use the East Stewart in order to build the project. That's always what it been, use East Stewart to build a project. East Stewart, what I, what I thought was, East Stewart is from Tarpon Avenue to, back towards A1A. And that is mixed use, you have um, mixed use on that end. But on the opposite end, which is Palm Beach Road, up to Tarpon, I was, I thought that was a different plot neighborhood. That was Sherwood, not East Stewart, but you're saying that now y'all considering Sherwood into the East Stewart project, correct?
It's, we're not classifying it as, as one neighborhood or the other. We're using a code, a code system to allow the project, cause the closest different zoning is the East Stewart zoning.
Well, all of this is East of Stewart, right?
That's what, yeah. I think that's the idea.
Designation.
But the thing is, a residential, a neighborhood is a residential neighborhood. We do not want duplexes in our neighborhood. And another project that's coming up on the opposite end, which would be September the first, they're allowing uh, commercial, which I thought, I think is a commercial, which is a daycare, to be built in the neighborhood. Is it a neighborhood, or is it a, a, a commercial neighborhood? You allow them to build duplex, you're gonna allow them to build a, a daycare, what's next? A gas station? I mean, come on. If that's the case, when I, when I bought my house, you should've told me, well, Mr. Duffy, when you bought your house in the residential, but oh, let's put on the, on the paper here, it may be changed if we decide to. You know what I mean? To me, it feel like special treatment. That's what I think it is, in order to get this project passed. The neighbors have spoken, we live in the area, we brought our houses expecting to have a residential neighborhood, and that's what we're, uh, wanting, not duplexes, not three houses on, squished on properties that won't look right. And that, there's not co, there's not a hardness for that. The neighbors spoke, we put you on the, on the board here, put you in office to listen to the um, community and the neighborhood. And that's what we want to do, to listen to us as residents.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next, we have Sanders Coleman.
Alright, thank you, Chief. Congratulations, uh, Commissioners, on your election, and may you be successful. Uh, my name is Sanders Coleman, I live at uh, Martin Luther King Boulevard, nine twenty-seven, a house over from the uh, the vacant area, where the wooded area at.
The microphone's falling, there you go.
Alright, thank you.
If you, if you push it down a little bit further, and, yeah, there you go. There we go.
There. Thank you. Well, I live Martin Luther King, uh, nine twenty-seven, Martin Luther King Boulevard, uh, household from the wooded area where they want to uh, build a duplex apartments at. The original plan was a single-family home, and we thought maybe we, we would stick to it. But seeing like you wanna get anything done, they got to annex it to uh, East Stewart, they have it born. The plan he showed, it looked pretty good on piece of paper, you can make anything look good. But in reality, the property is too small, you can't build that on there. Best he gonna do a Houdini, make a miniature apartment, house duplex, or small houses to put on there. Cause they don't have no park, uh, parking spot, they're gonna take out the whole, whole yard he gonna put there. And we prefer to like to have single-family homes there, so that people can own the house instead of paying a high rent. So they have something of their own, they can say, eh, East Stewart. So it won't change uh, the looks where we live at. Cause a lot of houses, you know, uh, duplexes, they look good when you build them at first. But give it ten and twenty years, they go down. Eh, anybody moving in and out, a good example would be uh, Golden Gate. Go look at them duplexes down there, how they went down. You know? And if you're trying to keep our community up too. And uh, but East Stewart, systemic racism is all about, and East Stewart were, uh, re-aligning it for years. So that somebody just come in, got a little bit of money, could put what they wanted, East Stewart, nobody won't say nothing about it. They can't do nothing about it. But I plead with y'all, take and squash it, tell them, go back to single-family. Uh, single-family houses, the whole community appreciated. Martin Luther King Boulevard and Sixth Street, they all be appreciated if you go back to the original plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman. Next, we have Helen McBride.
Helen McBride from Fleminggo Avenue. You know, for years I've stood up here, and I've always said, if you got some garbage to dump, we dump it in East Stewart. Now, just look at that development. On Sixth Street, you're putting three residential houses, Sixth Street is a white neighborhood. Okay, we come over to Dr. King's Boulevard, from the Police Department to Palm Beach Road, a residential. Very nice homes, the people keep their lots up, but we're gonna put duplexes. Why can't the five of you have the courage to say no? If you're putting three single-family houses in the white neighborhood, let's put three single homes in the black neighborhood. You know, spend months, but, but it's still in the news, black lives matter. Well, black neighborhoods matter. Now, the gentleman said about, and the Hartmans are, I, I know a lot of the Hartmans, and Mrs., one of the, one was children too, they were, they were the founding fathers. But East Stewart was founded in nineteen thirteen. There's a lot of families that are still there, like your families from generations. I'm not, alright, I don't live in the neighborhood, well, I live up, down on the other end of Third Street. But six houses, and let's face it, two-seventy-five to three-fifty, that's very high. Try to rent a duplex. Now, we have duplexes, but it was, they were in the county at the time, it was county land. Now, I'd say about maybe fifteen years ago, the rent was six hundred dollars. Now, they're getting two thousand dollars a month. And they're not keeping up the property. Uh, you know, just come down, it's Seventh Street, I think, in uh, Fleminggo. But I mean, come on, guys, and ladies, I'm sorry, you're the city commissioner, this is, you talk about the future. Six houses, three in the white section, three in the black section. That would show that you're being fair-minded. Now, I realize, we all have friends and different, many good friends, but we have to stop and think of the future. Because like that gentleman, Mr. Coleman, I believe his name is, said, go down to Golden Gate. I remember when those duplexes went in, and some of my friends lived in them, they bought, they lived on one side, running up the other side. You go down there now, and I don't hear anybody any day. It, it, it's, it's just going very, very downhill. But please, treat us, everyone as equals. Don't look at the color of anyone's skin. Just do what's good, both sides of that property are residential. Thank you.
Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. McBride. Yes, Commissioner?
I just wanted to say, um, the duplexes, are they on, you, you keep saying white side, black side. The duplexes are, is that where Mr. Coleman and his wife Faith and Floyd Coleman live across the street from the duplexes? That are gonna be built?
Uh, yeah, uh, both the black, no, Martin Luther King Boulevard, you know, Puerto Rican, they're here.
It's a mix.
Yeah.
Sir, if you, please approach the mic just for the benefit of anybody tuning in.
That's all I wanted to add, thank you.
Answer the question, Mr. and Mrs. Coleman, Floyd and Faith, they want Sixth Street.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, well, there's two Coleman's.
Alright.
Let's take it as.
Are you the daddy?
No, just a friend.
Okay.
Okay, Floyd Coleman, he lived on Sixth Street.
I've known you.
And I live on Martin Luther King Street. Okay?
Commissioner. Bruner, I had, I know exactly where Floyd lives, and that's what tore me from some of these comments, is the the black side and the white side, we're supposed to be past that, though. We're not supposed to be segregating one, Martin Luther King as one line of what, on one side is black and one side is white. Um, I know, Mr. Saunders was down at the end of Sixth Street, and then if you go north again, there are some duplexes that I believe are kept up on either Stipman or Fifth. Uh, that are seventy-five-foot wide lots, and that's, for me, this keeps going back to what they were originally plotted for. And they were all plotted for fifty-foot wide lots, but a lot of, in the proximity here, there are duplexes that are built on seventy-five-foot wide lots. And that's, that's what's sticking out to me in this, this close proximity of what I would say is this neighborhood, and it happens, that Martin Luther King does have some commercial on it.
Well, you have ham lots, these up there by uh, up there by the uh, the little, little store up there.
I apologize, sir, well, uh, we have to limit public comment, but if, if there's a particular question the Commission can ask of you, we'll have the answer, but.
Yes. Well, anyway, I live Seventh Street, uh, this mix, on Seventh Street, and uh, Richard Martin Luther King. And that Sixth Street, Florence lived there, he's the only uh, black lived on that street, the rest is all white.
Mr. Saunders lives at the end.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, sir.
Alright.
I, yes, Commissioner?
Um, on the uh, I certainly understand the concerns about duplexes from some neighborhoods where they have gone downhill, but uh, but at the same time, there are neighborhoods where they haven't. And, and to address Helen, that which I respect so much, uh, the, she mentioned the pricing of the single-family homes. If we wanna have new, new homes for folks to buy in Stewart that are less expensive, uh, you're gonna, you need to do things such as duplexes. That's the, just the only way to get the construction cost down, and get the cost down for a little, to a little bit less. Um, and, you know, and I think that um, there's single fam, in my neighborhood, which is an older, not as old as East Stewart, but older, some of the older homes are not, some are up kept, some aren't, they're all single-family homes. Um, but now we're starting to see homes getting torn down because of, cause they were so poorly, some of them, the older ones were so poorly uh, kept up, so. But I, I, I don't see any reason not to do duplexes, just, eh, you know, and, and I think there's um, there's a fear there, but I don't, I don't think it's um, it's understandable, but not necessarily warranted. Uh, but also to get the pricing down where people can afford homes. We need to, cause I, I can tell you, that's the, one of the number-one things I heard over the last few months, is the price of housing. And we've gotta figure a way, that was one of the reasons why I asked the price point on the single-family and the duplexes, cause this, this, uh, they will, the, for at three, two-seventy-five to three-fifty, I think is what Reed said, they're gonna be the most expensive homes in that neighborhood. Just be, you know, cause they're new, but, so I think that it's important that we, so I'm gonna support, continue to support the motion, but uh, I certainly understand where you're coming from, and I'd be happy to speak with you after the meeting, sir. So, discuss it if you'd like.
Um, sir, unfortunately, we, we do public comment, i- if you'd like to take the rest of your five minutes.
But the thing about it, with, with uh, black communities, they always been taking advantage of for many a years, you know? And uh, be sure, have something real nice and decent, so that somebody could have a house and be proud of, and say, this is my house, I, I own it, I work for it. You know?
Yes, sir, thank you.
So thank you, Commissioner.
Wait. Thank you, sir.
Um, I know I can say that I, I take all of your comments to heart, um, and I, I, I would encourage us not to say that we're trying to throw trash anywhere. Um, to be honest, when I first met with Mr. Hartman on this project, I mean, I told him that I wanted it, like I have been a proponent of since the beginning, which costs me, you know, some support is, is more density in our urban neighborhoods. I would have loved to see duplexes on both sides, more bang for your buck. Um, I'm sensitive to the, to the um, assertion that we're putting, you know, a, a lower-quality product on the black side of the street, and uh, single-family homes on the white side of the street. Um, I hear that, and, but, you know, I want housing, um, and to be honest, I've seen many beautiful duplexes throughout the whole city. I mean, go up to Salfish, I lived in a, in a, one side of a duplex um, on Salfish Lane. Uh, and they're gorgeous, and they're kept up very well, and that community is so tight-knit, and they take care of each other. Um, down on Fisherman's Cove, is it, and then along Ocean? Um, there's plenty of, we, we can't, we can't look down on each other for duplexes and say that that's gonna bring in riffraff or trash. and say that that's going to bring in riffraff or trash to our community. Our, you know, the cost of construction, unfortunately, in this day and age, given the price of land in the city and the cost of construction, I wish we could have houses, new houses, small cottage houses for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It's impossible. It's just, that's not the way that we, the world works right now. I hate to say it. Um, yeah, they're going to be expensive. I certainly couldn't afford that house, but I know people will. And then we'll have more people on the street, more neighbors. This is, this is not, I mean, at least I can say, this is not for me about putting the trash on the black side and, you know, nice homes on the white side. That hurts my heart to hear that and to, and for folks to think that. And I fear that we're not, we're not going to be able to get over that for some people. But, you know, it is the way it is, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Vice Mayor?
I think Mr. McDonald had asked about the price point. And Ms. McBride mentioned the number of units. I think if they went with the fifty-foot lots, they could do at least, um, four single families at Berks, uh, around four single-family units.
Six. I'm sorry.
Yeah. But, um, I just wondered if there was any way, um, if they would consider anything to, to maybe just do away with the duplex and have five single family on the lots? Mr. Hartman, and before Mr. Hartman says anything, Mr. Hartman, could you just tell us a little bit about the history of the Hartman family in the East Stewart geographic area, in developing in that area?
Yes, ma'am.
Up in the early nineteen hundreds and therefore.
So, my great-great-grandfather was the first mayor of Stewart, uh, J.B. McDonald. He was my grandfather's grandfather. Um, and he.
A McDonald's subdivision?
McDonald's subdivision, McDonald's Platte, I think is the, the legal term, that it's, that it's the, the legal description, is McDonald's Platte. So, um, he developed East Stewart because he believed everyone should own a home.
And that was the only place where people could purchase, was at McDonald's? During segregation times?
Segregation. So, I can imagine the, the challenges that that change brought for him. Um, and to hear, I almost feel like I'm being called a racist by people. And that, it hurts my feelings and it kind of pisses me off, excuse my language. The reason we did duplexes, it's a design, it's a planning process. It's planning. I, I'm not the planner that Kev Freeman or Don Quazzo is, uh, or Steve Meyer. Or, I'm not that planner, but I took planning classes with the college, with the college education. And the reason those duplexes are on Martin Luther King, it's a busier thoroughfare. It's higher intensity. So, you put higher-intensity development on a higher-intensity road. It's got nothing to do with putting trash on this side, it's single-family on this side. And I'm sorry to get so excited, but there are some things I can't tolerate. And that's being called a racist. I've never been called a racist in my forty-one years of life. And I feel like I've been told twice today by two people, and I don't appreciate it. The reason we did that was it's a simple planning reason. It's, it's for planning purposes. You put more dense next to busier roads, period. So, uh, the six single families, I prefer the, the two duplexes. Um, I, I, it's, it's, you know, if, if that's the, the will of the board, then so be it. Um, I've heard from multiple people, not just from the board, but from multiple people in the community that say, we need affordable housing, we need affordable housing, we need attainable housing, attainable housing. And here, I, we come up with a plan, myself and staff, come up with a plan that we think makes sense. And then we bring it forward. And I know it's changed, I know it's difficult. I've reached out to a couple of the neighbors, some didn't call me back. Some spoke to me and really appreciated the phone call. But it, I, I just go back to the reason I'm excited. To be called racist, it, it doesn't fit.
Let's make a motion, let's move on, Mayor.
Yeah. I'm sorry, sir, we've got.
I want to move on.
I, I did not call him a racist. I said, for many years, I've stood at this podium and some of you are old enough and is that here and you know. I was talking about the difference of East Stewart and the West Stewart. But I never, because I'm Irish, I know what it means to be called Irish, keep off the grass. I never called, and, hey, he's a young man, he's in a very, very upset net, but he's wrong.
Okay.
Did not call him that.
All right, let's, uh, we're all neighbors here. I know this is a sensitive issue. Um, and, you know, it's unfortunate that it's, it's come down to, to race when we're just talking about more housing for our community that we desperately need. Um, so I, I'd like for us to remember that we're all neighbors here and we're trying to do what's right for the community.
Mr. Hartman, can we take a roll? Can we do a roll call?
Thank you, uh, is there, Ms. Vice Mayor, did you say?
I thought Mr. Hartman wanted to speak, I saw him. No, he won't.
Do you have a question for Mr. Hartman?
We need to do a roll, we need to move this on.
We have a.
I agree with, the only thing I'll, I'll say is that if you look at Tenth Street, that's where I was raised. We moved up on to Tenth Street in nineteen fifty-three or fifty-four. And, and so this, this whole thing about black and white.
Please, please address the board.
I played with black kids the whole time growing up on Tenth Street. My dad was raised on Stipman Boulevard, which is right up there next to Blue Pond. Some of his best friends were black kids. So, this idea of putting trash, I'm like Reed, putting the trash on Martin Luther King, that's BS. These are going to be nice duplexes. I, I just don't see that on, on, we have, there are black people that live on Sixth Street. So, I, I'd like to put that to rest. Now, if you want to say that this does not, you don't like duplexes and you don't want affordable housing and you don't want rental housing, that's okay. I'm good with it, I can handle it. I'm, we're big boys. But the other charges are, are, are just blatantly wrong. And so, if you make, you make your mind up, go from there. But we're going to build a quality product. That's, that's what we're going to do. And so, we'd appreciate your support. We've met with all of you. And like Reed said, Reed made calls to all these people. And we've tried to work it out. And, and I, and I told my wife and Reed both, the cool part is, is I've been to county meetings enough of them where people start calling each other names. And through all of this thing, you know, we've been through two CRB meetings. Nobody's ever got personal. And that's, that's been really unique to see, that nobody got personal. And I appreciate that. And like Mr. Coleman, he didn't say that. So, I just want, I want to, I want to say thank you. And we'll all get along and we'll do what we need to do. But y'all need, like you said, you need to roll on, take a roll call and let's go.
Mr. Hartman, there is a public comment on Zoom. We have a public comment on Zoom. Yes, sir. Mr. DuBois?
Is it general or is it on this?
It's an item, it's on this item. I, I have the gavel on, uh, we need to hear a public comment. Yes, Mr. DuBois? If you could try, uh, maybe unmuting yourself? I'm sorry, Mr. DuBois, if you, if you'd like, you can, um, send us an email. Yeah, we'll have to call the vote. Ms. Kendall, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
Commissioner Matheson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
I'm voting yes on first reading, I hope we can work something out.
I'm sorry, was that a yes or a no?
Yes.
Yes? Um, Commissioner Brunner?
Yes.
And Mayor Meyer?
Yes. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Now, we're moving to item number fifteen. Um, this is Sailfish Cove UPUD. This is also a quasi-judicial item, according to the agenda. Mr. Mortel, would you read the ordinance?
This is ordinance number two, four, four, nine, dash, twenty, twenty, in accordance to the City Commission of the City of Stewart, Florida, approving a rezoning from urban waterfront to urban planned unit development for a point-nine-two-five-acre property located at thirty-seven and forty-one Southwest Seminole Street. Said land being more fully described in Exhibit A attached. Establishing the Sailfish Cove UPUD consisting of thirty multifamily residential units and five thousand seven hundred and sixty-eight square feet of office commercial use in accordance with the Section two-point-oh-seven-point-zero-zero Stewart Land Development Code, allowing a density of twenty-six-point-seven-five dwelling units per acre on a point-nine-two-five-acre site. Approving a final site plan, providing for development conditions, including a timetable for development. Declaring the plan to be consistent with the city's comprehensive plan, providing directions to the city clerk, providing for appeal of all ordinances in conflict, providing for separability, providing for an effective date, and for other purposes.
Thank you, Mr. Mortel. Mr. Reed?
I believe this is quasi-judicial also.
Oh, gosh, I said that, didn't I? Sorry, I'm a little scatterbrained right now, my heart is broken. Um, do the commissioners have any ex parte communications to disclose? Um, Commissioner Matheson?
I've spoken with representatives for the applicant, residents, and staff, and I'm here with an open mind.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald, Commissioner McDonald?
Uh, I've spoken with, uh, Marcella Campbell and, I think, staff, and I'm here with an open mind.
I, not, I haven't spoken with anybody recently on this project. I'm here with an open mind.
Commissioner Brunner?
I've spoken with no one and I'm here with an open mind.
I have spoken with staff, I didn't speak with the applicant on this one, and I am here with an open mind.
Would all those giving testimony, please raise your right hand? Let the record reflect that there are five people being sworn into the record. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing about the suit, so be it, God. Mr. Quazzo, I think this is the second time you're sworn, so it's special. Let the record reflect that everyone has been sworn.
I needed that mic.
Thank you, Mr. Mortel. Mr. Reed, thank you for correcting me earlier.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, Tom Reed, again, for the record. Uh, this is a rezoning to a urban planned unit development. It exists now as urban waterfront. Uh, it's necessary to, uh, request the UPUD in order to get the variances, uh, from the urban waterfront code. So, the site's a total of point-nine-two-five acres, um, located on the north side of Seminole Street. Uh, previously, it was approved as the Sailfish, um, Bluff, uh, with twenty, only twenty residential units compared to this proposal now is for thirty units. So, the, as I mentioned, the existing, uh, zoning is urban waterfront. The UPUD is necessary for the variances that the applicant is requesting. So, the site basically is for commercial office residential, uh, unit, I'm sorry, for commercial office units on the ground floor. There's a utility section. There's one of the residential units on the, on the ground floor. The second, uh, and third, and fourth floors are all residential except for the, the four commercial retail in front duplicate themselves on this, on the second level. There's also a Seminole Streetscape Improvement Plan that is going to coordinate and whether the developer goes first or the city with their Streetscape, Seminole Streetscape Plan, uh, there's coordination necessary for four parking spaces, uh, sidewalk, and landscaping. So, I mentioned the four variances that the applicant, uh, is requesting. One is density. They are asking for twenty-six-point-seven-five, uh, dwelling units per acre. Anything over fifteen requires your approval. They are getting a little bit of bonus with the, uh, density credits, so to speak, with the UPUD zoning. Principal building placement, whereas the urban center requires a zero line setback. So, the urban waterfront requires a five-foot setback. In this case, it will be a zero-foot setback after the dedication of, of land to the city for the right-of-way improvements. Building facade, anything over one hundred feet in width requires a variance. This is just over a hundred. Uh, the idea is to keep the vista. Previously, Seminole Bluff, uh, approval was able to get a vista through the center of the building, not so in this, in this situation. And then finally, parking within the building envelope requires a variance. So, a couple of the conditions to note would be that within thirty days of the approval, the applicant would dedicate the land sufficient for the Seminole Streetscape improvements on, along Seminole Street, from the Valley Gutter back to the property as, as depicted on the site plan. Uh, the applicant's agent, Ms. Campbell, has an updated site plan that she's going to present tonight that describes that area in more detail. Uh, if for, uh, if by chance the CRA Seminole Streetscape Plan occurs prior to the Sailfish Cove development, then the applicant would agree to contribute forty-seven thousand five hundred and fifty-nine dollars for all those elements that I mentioned earlier. As a condition, also, the assurance of, um, a revocable permit for the construction of this sculpture or the public art, sidewalk, parking space, monuments, sign, curbing, and landscaping, and other minor right-of-way improvements, uh, must be approved by the city manager under a separate application. Also, the applicant shall execute a riparian easement for the boardwalk in exchange for those office retail components, um, for the development that will be exempt. Basically, we're trading riparian rights in order to have the bar, boardwalk for, I believe it's, uh, sixteen commercial office retail spaces, uh, parking spaces. This is just a breakdown of, of the cost that if the sale, if the Seminole Streetscape Plan, if the city would go first, that the owner would contribute the forty-seven thousand five fifty-nine. With that, staff recommends approval, ordinance twenty-four, forty-nine, twenty, twenty, with development conditions. The applicant's agent, Marcella Campbell, is here to give her presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Ms. Campbell?
Good evening, Commissioners. Congratulations. Um, and while we set up, um, I want to say that this is a true infill project, as, as infill as it gets in the city. It's in the, in the actual absolute core of the city. And it almost gets surgical when you're working in these tight conditions. I have to say that working with your staff has been a pleasure. It's, it's a, you know, it's a, a project that has a lot of components and it's been very easy. Kevin and his team and the other departments have been, uh, great. Um, let's see. You ready? There we go. So, with me here today, but I, uh, are also a couple of other members of the team, uh, Don Quazzo, and, um, he's, um, from Conceptual Design Group, and Joe Peppra with Captic Engineering. The remainder of our team members are available on Zoom if you have any questions regarding construction, uh, technologies or, or any other issues that may arise. The site of staff noted is just under an acre. As I mentioned, it's a true urban site. It's in the absolute core of our city. Um, it's hard to see the site plan at this scale, so I'll take you a little bit through the details. This site was not very long ago approved for, um, another building for, uh, Seminole Bluff. Uh, the building itself had twenty-two residential units approved. It was just under a hundred and ten thousand square feet. The building that we are proposing now has more residential units and it's a true mixed-use building. However, it's forty percent smaller. It's a much smaller building footprint and it's a smaller building overall in scale and in footprint. As you can see, this is the proposed building. Staff showed you, this is how much the building sits on the ground. Uh, the building is designed, taking into consideration the, you know, best practices of sustainability. We are, you know, at the northern border of the tropics. This is not going to be one of those buildings with big air-conditioned lobbies and a lot of continuously air-conditioned, uh, multi-use rooms that nobody really gets to use. The amenity for this building is downtown. Um, it is designed like a tropical building. So, anyone coming in and going to the elevators would just go right about here. But if you're coming in, going through a zen garden, onto the pool patio, onto the deck, uh, the hama shutters protect from the weather, but it's not an air-conditioned space. Again, sustainability and also keeping the cost of living downtown as affordable and attainable as possible. This is not an affordable housing. This is not an affordable housing project, but part of adding density into the downtown is not just to get more people to support our businesses, more feet on the ground where we really need them, but also to try and get units that are more attainable by design. Smaller units on the water. On the previous project, you know, the, the, all the units were three-bedroom, three-and-a-half bathrooms. We have the entire range of units, as you will see right here. The rest of the building, the other three stories sit in kind of cantilever over this base. And yes, those hallways are air-conditioned. We're also going to use best practice sustainability principles. You know, those don't get air-conditioned to the same temperature as a, as an interior, as an interior unit. And, and green technology as we move along. But you can see that it is a, a building that is significantly less massive. So I learned where north is here on the bend from my, our presentation to, to the CRB. So if you're standing on Seminole Street looking north, you can see the ground floor, the four resident, retail, commercial units, access through the center for pedestrians. The upstairs units are also for office spaces, very small loft-type, very much like a Seola Place condominium. And the remainder is residential units, the two upper stories and here and here as well. Looking at this same building, from the other side, as you can see, it's very articulated, full of facilities, plenty of light. The staff mentioned, and we will get to that when we talk about the different items that are listed as exceptions, we have set back the building fifteen feet. In your document, we were going back and forth between a request from the city for thirteen feet of dedication for sidewalk. We wanted to do on-street parking. We were actually setting the building back a full fifteen feet to allow for eight feet on-street parking and a generous seven-foot sidewalk there. We've been working with Pinal and your staff and Kimley Horn, the engineers, working with the CRA to try and get this street designed as a curbless street. Not only will it have more elbow room, but it will really continue to enhance the low speed along this street and the special character of this very unique street. There's access to two different parking areas. And yes, the parking is within the envelope because the parking is essentially in the building and shielded from everything else. But at the same time, while it is in the envelope, it's not what we call a dingbat building where all you see is parking. A little bit of a closer view of those loft-type offices on the first floor and retail and/or office on the ground floor. Activating Seminole eyes on the street. In those conditions, you will also see that we need an easement or an agreement with the city to put art on the public right-of-way. This is actually a sculpture. By the way, I fail to say that one of the owners is a, is a local business owner, George Hart, and, and his partner, who is from out of town, but George is a majority owner in this property. This proposed Marlin. Sculpture. I knew you were gonna say it. I think, I thought Mr. Mortel was gonna tell you that. They are marlin, as is the bridge. And there is a, and there is a fountain. Now, this technically would have been within the property that's owned by the applicant, but since we are dedicating fifteen feet to the city, that's going to be in a public space, which ends up being surrounded by sidewalk. A view from the rear, as it was also mentioned from staff, we are giving riparian easements or dedicating the riparian rights to the city for the boardwalk, and there will also be public art on the fence between the pool and the boardwalks. The people walking along the boardwalk can enjoy an artistic fence, not just a conventional forty-eight inch, you know, aluminum fence as we, we walk along that. There's something very unique, and Joe is here to answer this. Most urban projects do not really have stormwater features. This is an urban project that incorporates a bioswale. There's no other bioswale incorporated into an urban site in the city that I am aware of, at least not within our core. And, you know, right now and historically, everything has been flowing straight into the lagoon. We are now going to capture it on a bioswale that is between the pool area and the building and, and troubleshoot before any of that discharges, not the lagoon, the river, my apologies. As I mentioned before, the previous building had all three-bedroom, three-and-a-half bathrooms. We are breaking this up from studios. There's a one, one studio, three studios plus den, three one-bedrooms, six one-bedrooms plus den, nine two-bedrooms, two two-bedrooms plus den, and six three-bedroom units. Again, the thought is to get attainability by design. A lot of these units are under nine hundreds or nine hundred square feet, which according to the code, that counts as a, as a half a unit. We have a few units that are eleven hundred square feet or under. That's point seventy-five. That's for, for the, for the purposes of density calculations, but they're still very generous units. And, and will allow people to, to live downtown at a very attainable price. I mentioned, these are, these are spelled out as, as exceptions, and we understand why they're spelled out as exceptions. We are truly requesting a new zoning category, the, the urban PUD. So I, I understand that the way the staff report is written is comparing it to the closest possible zoning designation and what would be different in this urban PUD. So we're not requesting an exception from an urban PUD category. We're just showing the changes from the closest zoning category there. So it's, it's, as staff mentioned, we are requesting twenty-six point seventy-five units to the acre, and anything over fifteen is considered something that has to come to you. However, this is consistent with a comprehensive plan at thirty units to the acre, consistent with a CRA plan that calls for density in, in the urban areas and within the CRA, and consistent with all of our redevelopment efforts in the city. You know, we heard for some projects that density, you know, too many big projects are being approved in the city, too much density is being approved. I did a quick little study. Unfortunately, the slide is covered with the Zoom window. Just in this twenty-five acre area right here.
Thanks.
There you go.
The twenty-five?
Yeah, so, so north of the railroad tracks between roughly, a little bit west of City Hall, this is Denver. The gross area density is one point eight units to the acre. We really don't have residential units in our downtown, in our core. And if we're looking at, again, recommendations from LEED ND for, I don't know, supporting basic transit, the minimum recommended density is thirty units to the acre. We are at a gross one point eight. Now, if we look at a slightly bigger area, including all of the potsdam area, it's about two point eight units to the acre gross. So I understand that when we look at a single project at a time, some of this density may look like, it seems like a lot. I mean, our downtown has a lot of commercial uses, but very little density to really meet our goals and our plans for a true walkable, mixed-use, live-work downtown. Couple of those other items listed I just mentioned was the fifteen-foot setback request. If we place the building on the property line, we would essentially be putting the building on the curb next to Seminole Street. So we're setting it fifteen feet back, dedicating that to the city, putting eight-foot parking spaces in the seven-foot sidewalk. There is the request that if a building is a hundred feet or more in width, measured parallel to the nearest body of water, an additional vista needs to be provided. Now, the building itself is the, the, the site is two hundred feet. The building is about a hundred and twenty-one feet. The main volume is just under a hundred feet, but it has a couple of wings that go back just to the east. This is, shouldn't say thirty-two, it should say twenty-eight. There's a view corridor right here. Right here where you have access to the garage, much like the original building. Through the building, there is another view corridor. And then there's another ten-foot view corridor, whereas the original building had five feet on each side. So if we look at this on an orthogonal, orthogonal view of the building, we have ten feet. Now, we're meeting city landscaping, so we may have to get rid of some plans if you want the clear views. But those are things that we can, as we move forward, coordinate with staff. This is the access point for cars, and there will be nothing there, so that's a clear view. As you sneak in around, you know, you can get little peaks if you're not a resident. And then there's that twenty-eight-foot area, which includes the drive access onto the parking here. So there's a lot of moments to actually take a good view. And we believe it satisfies the corridor view condition in the code. I mentioned it. Yes, we are putting parking within the envelope, but that's part of the condition of having, you know, a, a site that runs the waterfront and to keep the building with parking in the rear, not visible from the street. There, just a couple of other things. There was mention of an exchange of sixteen parking spaces in lieu of the boardwalk. Per our calculations, our parking requirements, if we apply, I mean, the city, the city does not per se have a shared parking ratio calculations. There's been a lot of talks about what happens when you have offices and retail that are used during the day and residences that are used during the night. And, you know, residents can use those parking spaces at night and vice versa. The city doesn't have a formula to apply to units and how you calculate that. The county does. So we use the count, the county's calculation, and by applying the, the factor that the county has in their code, we're required to provide forty-two spaces. With the four on-street parking spaces that we are building, we have those forty-two spaces. Now, we also have the exchange for the riparian rights of an additional sixteen unanimous approval from the CRB, and we are happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell. Well, while we're snapping into it, just to follow up on the parking, that's top of mind right now. We have, it's at thirty units, thirty, thirty residential units?
Thirty residential units.
And then, so actual total constructed parking spaces?
Forty-two.
Forty-two?
Yeah.
That's not forty-two, minus sixteen?
No.
Okay.
That would be a problem.
Yeah, right. Normally, I'm, I'm totally on board with the developer knowing what they, how to park their own, their own plan, but, okay, great.
And these are for sale units too, so every unit is gonna have a dedicated parking space. Maybe the three bedrooms get an extra dedicated parking space. The rest are first come, first served. And then there's the balance of those first come, first served with the retail and offices.
Commissioner McDonald?
Marcella, great, great plan. I, I actually like it better than the last one. You and Commissioner Clark were here for the approval of the last one, which was an ambitious project, but this is, I think this is much better. We had discussed on the phone when we spoke about assigned spaces. So you guys will be doing some assigned spaces?
Yes. Every unit will have assigned spaces. A few units will have more than one, and then there will still be spaces again. You know, in thirty, we have forty-two, only six are three bedrooms, so thirty-six will potentially, will, will be the maximum we assigned, and then the rest are first come, first served.
And in a couple of your, one or a couple of your first come, first served, can you put some electric charging units or?
It's, it's, I didn't mention it. It's definitely within the plan. I mean, the whole point of going sustainable by design is trying to incorporate all of the additional technologies. And I know that something staff has brought up to us. It's not a condition of our approval, but it's definitely part of the urban sustainable.
Can we make it part of the approval?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. And then, just to be clear, can I jump on you really quick? Are you talking about having them like pre-wired or the actual charging infrastructure?
So the other thing is just, that's gonna be a tight spot, and this was my concern when we approved the other plan. The construction plan far as, as dealing with Seminole Street, you know, I thought maybe might bring in stuff like barge, but then you got the boardwalk to contend with. It's a, it's gonna be a, a challenging site to build, and I just want to make sure you guys are prepared for that, so.
We are. I know that this building has been planned in conjunction, in conjunction with, with the GC that's gonna be building it. So as we're doing infrastructure, construction, documents, civil, they're thinking about how to build. So I know that we'll talk to staff. There was, we're talking about maybe a ten-foot dedicated area for staging in the front as we're building, because remember, the building is fifteen feet, and the parking probably won't get built until, you know, probably because of the design of the street, we'll have to wait for the city. We're also thinking of requiring that all of the construction trucks and everything park on the other side of, of the tracks and, you know, not be using up those spaces. And, and we wouldn't want them, you know, rushing with their hammers to move the car.
So, yeah, I just wanna get those, get those issues because, because it is gonna be, there's gonna be days where there's gonna be disruption on Seminole Street when pump trucks and, you know, for concrete and so forth. And, and that's understandable, but at the same time, that definitely needs to be coordinated with city staff.
Yes.
Yes, Vice Mayor.
Campbell, is Mr., is Mr. Captic? I'm forgetting everybody's.
Mr. Cap.
Captic is here, yeah.
Mr. Capra.
I'm totally forgetting everybody's names.
All the lot worse.
Are you responsible? Are you responsible for the traffic study or as well as internal parking plan? Because I was wondering about back.
Oh, sorry. Sorry, Ms. Kendall. Sorry. I'm speaking with Mr. Joe Capra. So about the parking study as well as the internal parking plan, did you, I didn't, I didn't see that. But I know you, people go in for those forty-two spaces because it's a one-way going north, and then you have the parking for the project, which is internal. Is there any backing out at all, or is it all, so they can, they're in there circling and coming out?
That's correct. They basically, first of all, Joe Capra for the record, essentially the part, the, as, as you point out, basically you come in and you can back out and come back out this way. You don't back out on the Seminole Street. It's the same on the side here. You can go in at either side, parking here, and then you can come back out. So you're always driving forward, coming out on the Seminole.
Okay.
It's the first thing. The second thing is you asked about, we pretty much showed that the number of trips is somewhat insignificant. That's, that's already in the, in the trips for the park, for the transportation study. Okay? And they, they, they utilize the calculation for parking based on the shared parking that the county uses. That's what, that's what was explained. So that's where we are on parking and everything. Do you want to talk about drainage? I know that was a big issue. Some people wanted to know about.
Please.
Well, as, as you know, we're right up against the Salinity estuary, of course. And what we're planning is, is what we typically use as a treatment train, okay? And in the treatment train, as you know, there'll be pipe in here that'll be exfiltration, underground storage. So we have underground storage underneath the both parking areas. There'll be some underground storage in exfiltration here. And what we have added is what we call a bioswale. And what we have added is what we call a bioswell. And basically, this area will fill up in this area with water, and there'll be plants in there. And essentially, when you combine exfiltration, the bioswell, and they'll come over to this area here where there's already a pipe through the wall, it'll discharge through a control structure. And, and what we have to do is nutrient load reduction, phosphorus and nitrogen. And, and quite honestly, the bioswell does provide some really nice reduction in nitrogen. We required fifty-seven percent reduction for this area, and we're actually going to get ninety-three percent reduction. That's why we went with the bioswell. The same with phosphorus, that the prediction is that we would need sixty-nine percent reduction. The bioswell will give us ninety-three percent reduction. So our intention is to get the reduction on nitrogen and phosphorus in the, in the, in the process. We also, I just say, you know, we also provide water quality volume treatment, and actually, we're about ten times what we need here. So we got more than what we need for that. But obviously, the requirement is for nitrogen and phosphorus reduction. So that's the process. So everything will be underground bioswell here, around the pool area here. It all, it basically backs up and holds the water in the exfiltration and in the bioswell, and then ultimately overdischarge it.
So what's the level at the discharge point?
Level, it's elevation eight.
No, I'm saying the, the, the water quality, when you discharge, after it passes through.
Well, we basically, we, we pretty much provide point seven-three acre feet of water quality treatment, and the requirements are only point oh eight.
Just, just for those who aren't.
So we're, we're holding about, just so you know, in the treatment, we're holding about two and a half feet of water in the system itself.
Okay.
Before it overflows into the, into the river.
Vice Mayor, my ass. Mr. Capra, can you just explain what is there now compared to what you just stated for the record?
Yeah, well, what's there right now is sloping from Seminole Street to the river.
No bioswell.
No bioswell, no treatment.
No ground percolation.
And, and quite frankly, when, before we put the new wall in, it's, anyhow, it just goes through the wall and eroded right into the river.
Thank you. And
are there any other?
Few other.
Oh, go ahead.
Questions? I didn't know if Vice Mayor was done, I just wanted to.
No, I'm, I'm fine. I was going to make a motion, but.
Well, I.
Questions?
I very much appreciate the drainage setup and the bioswell. I, I like Ms. Campbell that you mentioned the potential of a staging area for construction with the fifteen-foot designated, that's a wonderful idea, and thank you, Commissioner McDonald, for bringing that up. That was one of my wonderings. I wouldn't say it was advanced enough to know if it was a concern at this point yet in my political life. The charging stations, I, I'd like to see some hard numbers before next reading. As far as, as the number that would be there, I was thinking more of conduit, but also of maybe at least a level-two station or so. This is going to be, this is not affordable housing. This is going to be the, the type of clients that will be in the near future or may already have electric vehicles. Those are mostly my main comments, though, is, is I'd like some hard numbers before next reading on charging stations appropriated in the building. Other than that.
Were you trying to make a motion, Vice Mayor?
Motion on ordinance number twenty-four forty-nine twenty-twenty.
I'll second it. But I want to say you did a excellent job with your presentation.
Oh, thank you.
I've been here three years, I guess, in September, and the PUDs and then UPUDs and but the way you explained it with the, the densities, and it's so hard at times to understand it all, but you had it so well presented for, for me at where we don't have to ask you, you're just like first class, and all the things that goes with it, and so I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
You're here. Okay, I have a motion by Vice Mayor Clark and a second by Commissioner Bruner. Oh, sorry.
I don't think, she hadn't seconded, I'll second it.
I think she did.
Yes, I did. Oh, okay.
She wants her name on it.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions before I take public comment, before we take the vote? Let's go ahead with Mr. Armon Pasquale.
Pasquale on East Seminole Street. Can't talk with this fool thing on. Anyway, construction site was brought up. They're building a condominium on East Seminole Street. We've had nothing but construction problems for over a year. Streets blocked, cement trucks, heavy-duty trucks, people all over the place, working six days a week, noise, et cetera. Other Seminole Street, which is a much narrower street, will be a nightmare plus to build there. This condominium project's got too many people in it, the density is ridiculously high. Now you're adding, in addition to these people living there, over five thousand square feet of commercial. Commercial spaces need parking, whether it's a store, an office, or another bar, which we don't need. They all need parking. There is not enough parking now on Seminole Street. There's not enough parking in downtown for all the cars coming in and out of it. You're just compounding the problem. This plan is terrible. It's worse than the other one. The construction is cheaper, the appearance is cheaper, and the use of the land is ridiculous. If you approve this, then you approve another bad project. We've got one on East Seminole Street. Those condominiums are going to sell for over two million each. It's terrible. It looks like a prison. In fact, I call it the prison. And why people would even think of moving into an ugly building like that, I don't know. This one here isn't much better, and the condos will be a lot cheaper. If you're trying to do something to improve downtown, you better think again. I've lived there for forty-one years. I've seen a lot of destruction, and the biggest part of destruction is high density. We have more problems with people now than we had when I first moved there in seventy-nine. And it's getting worse. More people, more bars, more crime, more on and on and on. There gets to the point where you will not even be able to drive in and out of the place because people are crawling all over you. It's getting there now. This is just going to make the problem that much worse. Seminole Street is thirty feet wide, and you're going to run all this construction equipment down there, you're going to run cars down there, you're going to have people coming in and out of this condominium, there's another condominium across the street where they back right out into the street. You're planning whoever is doing the traffic study should be fired. They don't know what they're talking about or what they're doing. They do not know anything about practicality. This is bad news. Bad news, construction, too high density, destroying, you're destroying the whole town. And you continue to do it because you want to bring in more people, more tax revenue, more business to the crummy businesses that are there, bars. This is what you are heading, and it continues to go, go, go. That's all I've got to say.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next, we have Helen McBride.
Helen McBride, Momingo Avenue. Some of my questions were answered. I was very concerned about the parking, and that got answered. And as you know, I come downtown every day, my, my ride around town. During the week, you have the delivery trucks on Seminole. And the sidewalk, you got a signed sidewalk spot, so people are walking in the road, and you have those three ugly dumpsters. The young lady didn't mention what, about the dumpster in this unit. And, Troy, you got asked about the dump of the cement trucks and that. That is going to be a problem, but not really, because you could always close off part of Seminole, close that and have us go down flagler and then a posio. That's my engineering. Well, just for, you know, during construction, because you are going to have big trucks but no, most of my questions were answered, but I am concerned with the, how, I don't want to see another dumpster. I'd like to see there was other three go away on some, on that section of Seminole. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McBride.
Mr. Mayor, just a question on the dumpster issue. We do have a plan to remove those dumpsters on Seminole, and we're going to a trash compactor that'll be up here on the side of parking.
For those who didn't hear our, our faint-voiced manager, yeah, that's right, we, there is a plan to deal with the dumpsters and have a compactor, and I believe it's part of that streetscape plan. Ms. Campbell?
Do you want me to answer where the dumpster is?
I, I don't, I don't need that. I appreciate that, though. Thank you. Okay, yep, we've got a, a motion and a second. Is there any public comment online? Raise your hand if you do. Seeing none. Ms. Kendall, we call the roll, please.
Commissioner Matheson?
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
Commissioner Bruner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Clark?
Yes.
Mayor Meyer?
Yes. Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations, thank you. Look forward to seeing you on second reading. Item number sixteen has been continued. Now, moving on to item number seventeen, electric vehicle charging infrastructure. Mr. Martel?
This is ordinance number twenty-four forty-eight twenty-twenty, in order to the city of Stuart, Florida, adding a section two-point-oh-six-point-two-two of the Land Development Code entitled EV Charging Infrastructure of Chapter Two, entitled Zoning Districts, Uses Allowed Density, Intensity in respect of standards for the provisions of electric vehicle for EV charging infrastructure in new residential developments greater than fifty dwelling units, providing for repeal of conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, providing for notification, and providing for an effective day and for other purposes.
I move for approval.
Okay, well, I do have a motion for approval.
Second.
By Commissioner Bruner and a second by Commissioner McDonald. Mr. Freeman, is there any?
There was a change, there was a change, if you know, there was a discussion during the first hearing regarding parking infrastructure, electric vehicle parking infrastructure in commercial locations. We've removed that out, and it's entirely in our areas for residential development.
Thank you. Is there any, any further question from the board or discussion among my colleagues?
No, no.
Is there any public comment here on this item? If you are public comment online, please raise your hand. Okay, none online, seeing none here. Ms. Kendall?
Vice Mayor Clark?
Yes.
Commissioner Bruner?
Yes.
Commissioner Matheson?
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
Mayor Meyer?
Yes, motion carries unanimously. And last, but certainly not least, item number eighteen, up for D and D, a conceptual plan for East Ocean Boulevard and Memorial Trees at Memorial Park. Let me pull up. Mr. Peters?
Yes. Mayor Commissioners, this is an item presented as a discussion and deliberation.
Need to pull the microphone closer to you.
Here. Normally don't need that, but okay. Anyway, it's a item presented as a discussion and deliberation. As all of us know, we have our own favorite trees. We're just trying to bring this together. Anyway, it's for East Ocean, where the yellow tabs used to be, you know, the brittle trees, they break, they're damaged, we have to replace them, and what is it we'll replace them with? And then, as, as we discussed, the memorial trees, from time to time, we'll get requests from families, plant a memorial tree someplace. So we've selected what we believe is a good location near the ban shelf. Staff has worked with representatives of CapTech and Lucido and Associates to develop this conceptual plan, and they will now present to you what that plan says. Doug Fitzwater with Lucido and Joe Capra with CapTech are here. I think Doug is going to take the lead on this.
Yes.
And the plan that you had in the agenda package has changed just a little bit.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Peters. Mr. Fitzwater?
Yes. Hi. Doug Fitzwater with Lucido and Associates, also wanted to know about Paul Goulas from Lucido and Associates.
Hello, Mr. Goulas.
He worked on the plan as well, and so I'll give you a run-through of
Please.
what he's done today. So the city contacted us and asked us to help come up with, you know, a couple of trees that would be appropriate to the city of Stuart. So we're, we're, you know, we were originally tasked to come up with trees, and we were going to do a, just a typical section of where we could, you know, just show some tree planting. But then, the plan, as we got further into it, we just decided we'd look at East Ocean Boulevard in a real-life kind of example, so that we could identify the issues, and it comes down to, you know, there's no, you know, every tree, you know, there, there's, there's issues that we have to deal with in every planting scenario. So, so I wanted to give you an idea of the area that we've, we were, we looked at. We looked at East Ocean Boulevard all the way up to the ban shelf, you know, Memorial Park, and, you know, you all know the context. And we also looked, and it's, the city also asked us to look at that crosswalk over on Osceolans, see if there's some options there as well that you might want to consider. So to give you a kind of a rundown, this is our, you know, this is our analysis of the planting that's existing on East Ocean. I just want to point out some of the issues that we saw when we took a walk on East Ocean Boulevard. For example, there's hollies. This is the first tree that you see when you come in on East Ocean Boulevard. You know, this, this tree is, it's just not doing well at all. And it's underneath some power lines, which is an issue. It's just, it's just, it's just one of the first trees that greets you. Another consideration, too, is that this is a retail space, so, so we have, you know, bays here with signs on top, a, you know, signs. So you want to be cautious that you don't block the views so much for the retail establishments as well. So that's one more consideration with the plantings. Then, along East Ocean, this is a photo from the, on, 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 on the north side, but you can see water meters. So we do have some sort of water utilities running through the planting areas here. So that's another consideration that we have to be cognizant of as well. Also note that there's no trees in these, these islands here, which is an opportunity that we'd like to take advantage of. Here's a, here's another picture of FPL power lines that everyone's aware of as an issue. So, so what's happened is FPLs come in and top this oak tree. So we've got basically, I don't know, it almost looks like less than half of an oak tree. Is it alive? Absolutely. You know what I mean? It's alive, it's doing okay, you know? And does it provide shade? Yes, it does provide shade to people when they walk down, but is that the best, best location for an oak tree? It's a very, very narrow planting area, so we want to talk about some options there. For example, this is a drone shot that I took over the weekend of, of the, the park, and, you know, these are, these are oak trees here that are causing the issue. But, you know, we have an opportunity to allow these, like, poinsettias and other trees actually start to grow into this space. So, 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 you know, you know, the tendency is to look at just a roadway, a park, courthouse, but really what you have is an overall system, and they all kind of interrelate, and the trees can serve a purpose for the park and they can serve a purpose for the street. Here's that water meter issue, too, that I brought up. So, you know, the, if these trees grow, you'll get, you'll gain shade, you know, if, if these oak trees were removed eventually. So here's another shot of, of the park. Here's the recent memorial tree in here, but there's also an opportunity in this area here to put some trees that can, can grow and add shades for the walk as well. So that's something to, to consider, you know? Here's the, some islands here that do not have trees, which would be nice to start to include them. And the reason I think that those trees are important is that what you have is, you know, East Ocean's a straight road all the way to the beach, you know? So, so there's nothing, there's nothing in the, you know, kind of, to kind of, it just, it just, just, the view just drops to, you know, it's like looking down a railroad track, you know, there's really no interest.
I agree with you.
Yeah.
I've always said that, right to the beach.
I've always said that, right to the beach, most beautiful place in the world.
Yeah.
It's ugly going out in the street.
It's just a straight shot. So, you know, there's opportunity in here and here and here to start to put some trees, um, to help shorten that view. Um, some other options too is, that we looked at is, you know, have these little, these little strips here that are striped out, you know? There might be a possibility of pulling pavement up and, um, planting trees in there as well. You know, that'll help start to, start to.
Beautiful.
You know, create more of a, of a tighter feel for the street. And we're not modifying any, any parking spaces, we're not taking away parking. This is really kind of just looking at, uh, a kind of a refresh of East Ocean Boulevard. Uh, you know, and then talking about the memorial bricks, you know, those have been out there for years. Uh, you know, obviously you have, you have memorial, you know, bricks, missing trees, you have bricks with poor quality trees, you have trees, missing bricks.
What can we do about those?
Yeah, what I, what I'm gonna suggest is, is, you know, you know, maybe, maybe you don't necessarily need to have parity with like one tree, one brick or something like that. Maybe what we do is we create a, a memorial area, you know, of where we put the bricks, you know, at like the entrance to gazebo park or the entrance to the ban shelf, the area we identified. So those are options, or maybe, maybe it's a.
I can tell you that a lot of the bricks were not memorial in nature.
I know, I know, they were corporations and things like that.
Well, I mean, it was just, what happened was Dickie went around and got a bunch of people to donate money to, uh, do those tababoyas. I know it was like two hundred bucks and I paid two hundred dollars. I ended up with a brick somewhere. I've never seen it. But it wasn't a memorial for any purposes.
Right, right. Yeah, so, so, so there's no, there's, but that, that, that's fine. I mean, if you want to continue to.
We just didn't have a, a real program around it.
Yeah, but, but, but what's happening is, is they're just, you know, for maintenance, you know, difficult to maintain the bricks, they start to sink, you know, the trees, you run into an issue like, well, I have this brick here, my tree's dot dies, you know, this tree's surprised.
I just, I point out the lack of memorial is a good thing because if it was, if the nature of moving the bricks would be different. They were not intended for memorial purposes.
Okay, so, so that, that's something that the board can make a decision on.
Tell you who to go and get money from next time you need a tree though.
I'm glad you know.
Or, or the other alternative too you have is, as you do improvements, you could, um, have new bricks or memorials and, you know, maybe, maybe there's a time period for the brick, you know? Maybe it is ten years, maybe it's fifteen years or something like that, you know? And maybe they get sunsetted at some point. Um, it's, 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 it's something to discuss. Um, you know, here's, here's the areas that we're talking about. This is the, the ban shelf here, you know, this would be a nice plaza here. It, it should be a plaza anyhow, um, leading up to the entrance. This is over gazebo park. This is an opportunity as well for commemorative plaques or bricks or, or if, if you want. You know, some of the options are the bricks, you know, this is outside of the Lyric Theater. This is pretty cool, you know, the, the, the stars, it's certainly more expensive, but you could do something, you know, Stewart related. It could be selfish, it could be, you know, it would just, it'd be difficult, fine, but that, that's an option to consider, you know? Uh, it depends on how much money someone would end up donating for that. So this is, this is the, uh, street tree plan that, that we developed with conjunction with the city of Stewart. Um, so to kind of walk you through what we're thinking is, um, everywhere that we have an X is a tree that we're, we're, we're suggesting removal of.
Doug?
Yes.
Do you have any of those Xs, uh, oak trees?
Yes.
We'll talk about that later.
Yeah, that's why, that's why we're requesting presentation. So, so absolutely. So, so, yeah. So, so it, it was mainly pink tababoyas and the oak trees is what we're suggesting because these are the ones that are, um, basically cut in half. All the, uh, the, the, the green trees here are, um, yellow tababoyas. We're suggesting keeping those. Um, you know, they're, uh, I don't, they are a brittle tree, but for now, um, I think we, we should keep them. And then as they, as, you know, a storm comes through, a storm event, there's an issue with one, we would suggest replacing them with a purple tababoya. Uh, and we can get into some photos with those in a few moments. Um, and then this area in here, uh, kind of just walk you through the plan. We were thinking about Christmas palms in front of the retail bays. We can, um, plant those under the power lines with no issues, um, and they won't block the signage. We actually have those and I have a photo coming up of them and they're located over by the, um, Blue Door Cafe. So, so there's already, um, Christmas palms is planting, so they're, they're out there and we'll give you an example of it. Uh, these are the tababoyas that we plan on keeping. And then, um, as we, we talked about these planting areas in here, we're suggesting coconuts, um, in this area here. And then as we got closer to Memorial Park, we were going to go larger and bring in some, uh, medjool date palms is what we're thinking in this area here, just to get a little bit more peace. But I think with this and with days, it will help, um, create some interest on East Ocean Boulevard. And then these over here were some areas that we were planning on planting, uh, with coconuts. And then this area in here was the, uh, we're adding some planters as well. So, um, we'll show you some photos of what we're looking to do.
Wonderful.
So, um, so these are some of the photos, uh, that we have. Let me go to the next one here, this one here. So this is the fern tree, which is something that we, we've selected. That's got a very full head, very green, interesting leaf. And it, and it's, and it's to scale to a pedestrian scale, it provides shade. It's a, it's a, it's a nice looking tree, it can be maintained. And, uh, the purple tababoya, um, example of that, it's a darker green leaf than the yellow tab, it's more tree form. It blooms with a purple, uh, leaf. The coconuts that you're familiar with, uh, this is taken at Azul. And here's the Christmas palms that we were thinking about planting in front of, um, uh, the bagel shop and Brentwood's office over in that area. This is, this is, see this is under a power line. And it's, and it's pedestrian scale tree. Um, I believe we were thinking about putting doubles in there instead of the singles. So it'll be a little bit looser feel, but a little bit more mass. So, um, so to jump on, over to the ban shelf, here's the ban shelf area, you know, we'd worked on the, uh, uh, rework of the Memorial Park years ago. As part of that, we had our master plan or, uh, the ban shelf. So what we were looking at doing here was, uh, to, right now, the ban shelf just has a sidewalk shooting up the middle of it, you know? And for, for events, you have a sidewalk right in the middle, it's not great layout space to put, you know, blankets and things. So what we did is we kind of went with a more oval shape. It's kind of in keeping with the, uh, uh, the ban shelf and it's kind of an elegant look. Uh, and then, uh, with the courtyard here, um, and we're planning on doing some sort of Bermuda grass in here because it would be a great grass to lay out, lay your, your blanket on, listening to the event, ban shelf. And, um, it also has a dual purpose too, is it, you know, for exercise and things like that too, you know? I could see trainers out there doing some work, which would be interesting as well. So, uh, we're planning on keeping these oak trees here at the entrance. So, um, so that's this plan. Um, and then around the perimeter, we were planning on the fern trees as well. Nice dense head, I think it would be an interesting tree for that area.
So, uh, Mr. Fitzwater, while we're looking at this, I, and discussions with, uh, staff, you know, we are kind of exhuming the old, um, Memorial Park master plan split into phases. And there has been some discussion around prioritizing the ban shelf phase over the main event side.
Yep.
Stage area of the park. So I, I, I think this looks beautiful and I would definitely be interested in, uh, pursuing a design kind of in this way.
Yeah.
But, um, just as far as our discussions around the phasing, the main second event side has, I think, been kind of a priority for staff.
Right.
Over this, but, um.
Yeah, no, this is, this is, this would be a, if this was redone, I think this would be a really nice area for the community. It's a, it's a, it's a smaller scale, uh, but it's, it's certainly a neat, it's a neat space, especially with the historic nature of the ban shelf.
Well, hold on, let me, uh, Commissioner?
Yeah.
Doug?
Yeah.
By the way, great, great plan, and I know you did such a great job on Memorial Park. And so, um, I like, uh, everything that you've shown us today, I agree with everything. I am concerned about taking the oak trees out. And, uh, I, I can't go in the Osceola Street Cafe without having oak trees beat over my head on a daily basis because of a vote taken about four years ago. And so I'm very hesitant about removal of, uh, oak trees, even though we needed to remove those oak trees in, in, on Osceola Street. So, uh, I, I, I'm gonna trust that, uh, that you're gonna make sure that we have a comparable canopy where the oak trees are.
Yeah, let us look at that, you know, and maybe, we'll have to take a closer look at, like, on that aerial that I showed you, I'd like to do an analysis of that side there just to make sure that we have, we can identify the trees, we can identify the canopy, and then make a recommendation of if we want to put additional oak trees on that, on that, you know, the southern side.
Yeah. You know, I would, I would recommend that while you're working on this and the, is go in the Osceola Street Cafe and there's a painting in there of Osceola Street before the new street, streetscape was done. And I have just yesterday, or no, this morning, I guess it was this morning, it was pointed out to me, so.
Is it for sale?
What's that?
Commissioner, is it for sale?
The painting?
Yes.
You're gonna buy it?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, I would burn it.
Yeah, didn't say burn it, just put it someplace where, you know, nobody got to get again.
Yeah, well, but anyway, so I, I would recommend you go look at that, then go out and look at the street and you'll understand why I get, um, why I get abused on a regular basis, um, over that. And, uh, and I never want to see, what, what is that tree that we have, that we put down there, crepe myrtle? I never want to see another one of them.
Well, hold on a minute.
Hold on, they're actually gonna be very nice when they're done. They're.
It's all about, it's all about pruning, crepe myrtles can be found with incredible shade trees if they're limbed up to be essential.
I've got three of them in my neighborhood that are phenomenal.
Okay, well.
Commissioner?
I'll, I'll revisit the crepe myrtle later, but, uh, but right now it's, uh.
What do you want to say about the oaks in front of the courthouse though? I know there's also a lot of critics in the courthouse. And when, uh, the county recently took down an oak tree next to the Arts Council building to do some roof work there and, yeah, I got lots of phone calls because they thought it was us that was doing it. So I know we'll, we'll get courthouse phone calls.
Yeah.
The, the, the one thing about the, uh, the oak trees along East Ocean is power lines. It's all about power lines and that AT&amp;T cable, the big black one that you see running down through there, is the one that, I mean, they look like almost field goal posts.
Yeah.
At this point.
No, I, I, I agree with everything Doug said and, uh, but I just also know that, how much the feedback I got regarding, uh, oak trees. So I just wanted to, uh, I want everybody to keep that in mind as we're discussing this, so.
Uh, Vice Mayor, you were trying to say something?
Yeah, so I was thinking that when we are working into this plan, if we're gonna try to break it into segments and, you know, when we cost it out, and then I want to make sure that we, I, you know, stay with the theme of the flowering trees. I know that you had some trees that were green, but I guess we do need a variety.
Yeah. Yeah.
Definitely the flowering trees.
Yep. Commissioner Matheson?
Well, Mr. Fitzwater, I agree with Mr. McDonald and even further. I love that the route we're going on. I can't support removing any oak trees unless there's, they're literally growing to a, a utility line, like some of the pictures I did see, but people want shade. They currently provide shade. Most of the people are looking down the sidewalk at a seven foot height level or, you know, a five foot height level. They're not looking up at the power lines. I'm sorry, the Public Works Department, they're the ones that are. I've never flown in a drone before. But this, the whole push is to plant more trees, not to pick out ones to remove. We, we doubt, that was done a few years ago. So I want this money to, that's in our tree mitigation fund to stretch.
Yep.
So frankly, I'd rather have that tree in the picture there that is providing shade and is getting relatively mature than to remove that and ask the residents to wait a few more years for the replacement to be put in. I, I love the palms and, and, and the tough part about this is they're only, there are certain trees work in certain areas. So the, the islands obviously weren't smaller, palms are good. Poinsettias provide a ton of shade and a wide canopy.
Right.
But they have to be planted in the right spot. But I don't, I can't go to Stewart residents in this picture right now and say, well, we took out those oak trees, but in five or six years, those poinsettias are gonna grow out and provide you shade. I'm looking to keep the oak trees and plant more trees in different areas and, and let time grow into it when we absolutely need to remove a tree.
Okay, so what I, I'm kind of hearing is that we look at this area in here, um, look for opportunities to put some additional trees.
Yes.
And then they'll grow in and at that point, if they're ready to provide the shade, then you'd be comfortable removing the trees if they need.
If they needed to be removed. And I hear you on the tababoyas that if they're brittle and broken, I, I certainly get that. But those oak trees are still alive. I, I'd like to stretch our focus on addition as much as possible with as minimal subtraction.
Yeah, I agree. And I'd like to follow up on what the Vice Mayor said. I agree that, I mean, traditionally with the yellow tabs, the, the flowering trees are, have been a thing in Stewart, and I don't want us to lose sight of that. But again, we need to, I think we need to mix flowering trees and shade trees so that we have a majority canopy cover over our, uh, over our sidewalk there. We can spot in the pink, or sorry, the purple tabs alongside, but I think the pri- the priority, I mean, we spent all CRA talking about shade trees. And I'd like to, and Doug and I spoke a little, Mr. Fitzwater and I spoke a little on the phone about different species of trees. I have a, a few Japanese, or fern trees, um, on a, my, one of my business properties and they're beautiful. But, you know, I really want to keep pushing for natives as well, you know? We're ripping out, well, not just, they're escaping, but if we're, if we're talking about eventually moving towards cutting out a native oak tree and then putting in all these, you know, other kinds, I'd like to focus on trees that, that can provide some shade that are native or more appropriate. I'd be open to looking at crepe myrtles if they can be limbed up and grown into a canopy or other smaller tree plants we don't think of as trees like calusia. There's an example of a calusia that's limbed up and grown into a interesting shade canopy. Tropical almond, which unfortunately is on invasive category two, so maybe that's not the right thing, but.
There's pigeon plums that we'll take a look at.
Pigeon plum, I've been looking at a lot too. I've been looking at the Florida Native Plant Society, um, regional, you know, list of plants. There's a lot of really good tree, shade tree suggestions there. So I would just like us to maybe, I mean, the fern is nice, but I think I'd like to see a little more variety. And maybe this is a thing for us to think about, what's our identity for our main, our main roadways? I, I do not like date palms, I'm sorry. I don't think this is Boca, but I know we have a lot of date palms already around there. So if we've got to plant them, we've got to plant them. But, you know, I, I'd much rather have the, our native shrubbing, uh, sable palm, you know, like Ernie Lyons would be proud. And then while we're talking about Memorial Park, this is something I've mentioned to staff before and it could be a part of the, the phased redo. But when I go to the park and when a lot of people that I know go to the park, you know, put out a blanket, read, play, slay down, just hang out in the park, it's such a beautiful park to behold as you're driving by. You see the wide lawns and, but you don't, I mean, except for events, you don't too often see a lot of people using the park. And I, and I've been wondering about why, because it's so nice and it's right in the middle of town. And every time I go to the park, I think it might have something to do with, you go down and you lay down and you relax and all you hear is, it's just, you, you feel so exposed, there's cars racing by, it's loud. And I've thought about where are the beautiful parks that I've been and enjoyed and spent hours in parks and other places? And there's always a kind of boundary where you go into the park and you've signed up, you've escaped the city a little bit, you know, you're, are in a new place. So if we can find a way to think about hedging or different kinds of like, uh, canopy trees So if we can find a way to think about hedging or different kinds of like, uh, canopy trees and some understory plants along this, the sidewalk, um, that screen a little bit of those big lawns so that when you enter Memorial Park, it's like you've entered a slightly, you kind of stepped out of the city and you've entered nature a little bit more. And you're not just in full view of cars racing by. That would be a suggestion there.
Yeah, absolutely.
What you're, what you're trying to do, I mean, it's like going, um, up and down like Colorado. You know, to, to beautify our city and make the property more valuable, make people want to come here, slow down to look at it. Having an oak tree here and a palm tree here. You're a designer, you're a planner, you're, you're top dog at this. And I love what you're doing. I want to see more of it. I like palm trees. He doesn't. But that's okay. And I like oak trees too, but I want it to be uniform. I want it to be beautiful to end there at, at Georgia Avenue and be on both sides. And then going out to, uh, to, to the first bridge. I want, I know you guys, we all think like this, this is what we want. We vision that because it makes your property value go up, your commercial property. I would like to rent, uh, one of the buildings there, um, if there was, or if they could build, the people will build one. They want to come here and, uh, we want them to come here, especially people with a lot of money. How I feel about it.
Well, we're getting, getting a little late. I just want to check in with staff, Mr. Matheson, what are you looking for in this?
Do you have an example of the crosswalk on Osceola?
Yes, I do. I wanted to, yeah, I need to do that right now. We were also asked to look at the crosswalk, yeah, the other day, so.
Mr. Mayor, quick question. Doug, did you mention you're looking at or considering boulnasia arborea? I've had a few arborists recommend that tree to me for some of these areas. And I could.
They get rather large too. That's our, the main problem is the power line.
Yeah.
That's what we're really not quite here. That's, you know, the reason why we chose the purple path that we can't prune the top of. It's, it's going to grow a little bit in the power line too. It seems to be the tree that takes the most beauty, keep its shape and offers shade and flower.
Okay.
But that's the reason why we chose the purple path. And we didn't want to have, I guess, too many different types of trees. Unlike you spoke about, so we kind of felt the purple tab would be the best one for all the reasons. So we were trying to have two or three different flowers.
Would the boulnasia fit in some of these islands though? If they're larger?
Yeah, I mean, on one side, you know, I think still they do have, might have a power line on the other side, but, um, we could certainly, we'll make note of that. And once again, it could be a tree that we put on the boundary of maybe the park or, uh, you know, band shell area.
No, there's opportunities.
First, just down the street, maybe the street needs to be more uniform.
Right.
Want to get a little bit more variety on the sidelines.
Beautiful.
That would be a good tree.
Okay, can you show this part? Hold on, I'm trying to get through this. You guys have been after me for two years, so I'm trying to get through this.
And he's been after me for two years.
And so, so the thought was, is that we could, we could, we could bring in some coconuts, like what we've been doing, try to arch them over and then bring in some.
I love coconut palms.
Fern trees, you know, we're looking for something that's kind of a, a, you know, a nice shaded tree. But we could, we could look at other options in here too, but that's, that's kind of the vibe we were looking at.
Are there, is there anything in there right now? Yeah, go back to those are the.
Again, Doug, I'm going to buy a cup of coffee at the Osceola Street Cafe and show you the painting.
I'm going to buy it.
Okay, um, so, so, uh, Mr. Dias, I mean, what are, what are you looking for out of us so right now?
We have current year funding budgeted, we have following year funding budgeted. As Mr., uh, Peter said when we started this, everybody has their favorite tree. And so we, we hired this group to give us the best possible evaluation, considering the space and what we can do there. If you guys want them to go back and evaluate the trees you've given them and then come back again, we can do that. But at some point we got to say, let's go.
But are we talking, so this is a discussion of the, of specifically that, of the crosswalk here and then this first run of East Ocean?
Yes.
Okay.
I like what he's done.
Before, before we, you know, just finalize everything, is there any, is there any long range, um, capital improvement project where we're actually going to be talking about, um, a road diet for Ocean? Uh, uh, a parkway style redevelopment with, you know, multimodal? I mean, that, I, I don't want us to start planting out all these trees when we might be talking about.
Not unless you got $50 million in your pocket.
Okay, well, if that's not, if that's not in the works, then.
I like everything but, but the removal of the few oak trees.
Yeah, I like, I'm, I think I agree with Merritt and then I'd like to see some, I'm not sure if I like that, but I'd like to really, in fact, I've been, but I really would like to get together and talk to you about Osceola Street.
Okay.
I love coconuts, but I hate to see them wasted when all the coconuts have to be cut off and thrown away.
So, Miss, well, I'll eat them.
I got.
So, Mr. Dias, okay, we're, we, we all have general consensus, we're, we like these plans. We're not going to, um, we, we don't, we wouldn't like the oak trees to be removed, at least at first. So will this be coming back to us for a final plan review and authorization? Or are you going to take it now at staff level and start working on it?
Take it at staff level, start working on it.
I'll move, go make a motion to that. Second, keep in the.
What are we, what is, what is the motion here? What are we doing?
To move forward with this plan, but leaving the oak trees in front of the courthouse there.
Okay, and the oak trees don't get touched?
Right.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Bruner and a second by Vice Mayor Clark. Any public comment on this motion?
Can we, can we trim the oak trees? Just a little bit, okay?
Well, are you going to trim them? So.
I said just a little bit. That's either five feet or five inches, but somewhere in between. Now, they do need to be trimmed a little, a little better than they do right.
Okay.
Small chainsaw versus the big chainsaw.
Yeah. We've got a motion and a second. Ms. Kendall, will you call the rule, please?
Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
Commissioner Matheson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Clark?
Yes.
Commissioner Bruner?
Yes.
Mayor Meyer?
Yes, motion carries unanimously.
Finally.
Okay, and we call this, we adjourn this meeting at 10:00 PM.